Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Terry Bill and I am a senior at the new Saginaw United High School. I just had to make sure I was on track, I had to make sure I was doing it all good. But, and tonight I will be leading us in the pledge of allegiance, so you guys can all stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the principle with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
As we settle our minds on this evening, just say note of praise and worship through our prayer. Heavenly Father, we come at this time saying thank you for this beautiful day and all the blessings you continually bestow upon us. Heavenly Father, we ask now as that we go into this forum, that you would let it be a blessing to our community, to the people that have served on it, and to those that are prepared for it, Heavenly Father. We know that we need knowledge in our community, and we seek that daily. We ask now that you will be a blessing and traveling graces as we leave this place, Heavenly Father. We'll be so careful to give your name, all the praise, all the honor, all the glory. Jesus' name, amen.
My name is Karen Lawrence Webster, and I'm the president of the Saginaw County League of Women Voters. Would all the league members who are here tonight please stand? Thank you. Can you guys give them a hand, please? I would also like to thank our Saginaw County Youth Commissioners with Ms. Anderson and Terry Bill, please stand, we will give you a hand. So, a couple of months ago, the Saginaw League of Women Voters, we started a Saginaw County Youth Commission, and we have our commissioners, our mentoring, at least one youth from their district or a surrounding district. And so this is a pilot program, and so you will see more from them in the future, but I want to appreciate them for coming out tonight. And they will also be our timekeepers. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization. Although the Saginaw League Board may take action on government measures and policies in the public interest, the League does not support or oppose any candidates or political parties. We believe in the power of women to create a more perfect democracy. That's been our vision since 1920, when the League of Women Voters was founded by leaders of the women's suffrage movement. And just a side note, there are a couple of people in the audience who represent a certain sorority that was a part of the suffrage movement also. For over 100 years, we have been a nonpartisan activist grassroots organization that believes voters should play a critical role in democracy. In Saginaw, we have a long tradition of sponsoring a city council candidate's forum, and we are proud to continue that tradition tonight. After tonight, if you want to know more about our candidates, please go to vote411.org and read their profile. You can also create your voter plan on that site, and feel free to share that link to anyone in these United States, and they can find out their information also. So now, let's talk about tonight's forum. I will read the rules, and our moderator, he's going to reread the rules. So, first of all, each candidate will have two minutes for an opening statement, and for that, we will go in alphabetical order. You'll have 90 seconds to respond to five questions and two minutes for your closing statement, and we'll go in reverse order. Yes, that's my seat, Chloe. I said, yes, that's my seat, Chloe. Each candidate will have two minutes, I'm sorry, for opening statements, 90 seconds to respond to five questions, and two minutes for their closing statement. Candidates were provided the subject of the five questions prior to October 15th, 2024. As candidates took their seats, they selected a number for each question. The numbers will represent the order in which they will answer the questions. Our Saginaw Youth Commission will be our timekeepers. When you see the green sign, that means start; yellow sign, 10 seconds remaining; and the red sign means a hard stop. Now, about our moderator. Our moderator is Dr. Michael Gavin. He's the president of Delta College. He is the author of two books. The most recent, The White Nationalism in Politics in Higher Education, was released in 2020, and it's on paper, it's in paperback as of the spring 2023. He leads a national coalition of college presidents and higher education learners in resisting anti-diversity equity and inclusion called Education for All. Please note that the questions were not created by the moderator. The moderator cannot provide you additional clarification. The moderator will not fact-check you, and please don't ask the moderator to repeat the question more than one time. The subject areas that we will cover tonight will be safety, property and income taxes, American Rescue Plan Act, City Council School Liaison Committee, Back the Blue Ballot proposal. So with that, I want to introduce you to Dr. Mike Gavin. We give him a hand.
Honored to be here tonight to be your moderator. I did want to say that I had a really good conversation. I could never be in front of a microphone and not talk about Delta College, talking about, with Bill over here, about being part of the Saginaw Academy for Excellence, going to a different school after he finishes at Delta, right? We're trying to commit some of that. But, I say that only because I'm really glad to be here as part of the ecosystem that is Saginaw, in terms of representing Delta as well. And as we move towards a national election where the political discourse is divisive, to say the least, I'm sure we won't have that kind of discourse here, not only because of, I know the people, I know many of you, but also I know the people of Saginaw. And often what gets lost in the national discussion is that a lot of the real work happens at the local level. And so I'm really proud and honored to be here to be with you tonight, and I'm sure all of us here will be interested to hear your thoughts on particular policies and direction for Saginaw. With that being said, we have, I'm going to go over the rules one more time. I really liked, Karen, how you said what the moderator will not do, and I need you to bring me to Delta for each meeting that I'm at. With that being said, each of the candidates will have two minutes for an opening statement and 90 seconds to respond to the five questions and two minutes for their closing statement. My role will be to call on you by number, not by name, so for instance, I'll say, number one, it is your turn for the opening statement. After that, you will, after that, you will see that there will be the red, yellow, green, yellow, and red signs coming up, at which point you will be cut off for your response. The candidates, again, were given the subjects for the five questions prior to the October 15th, 2024 date. As they entered the room, they selected the numbers that I'd mentioned earlier, and the Saginaw County Youth Commissioners will be the timekeepers, green meaning start, yellow meaning 10 seconds remaining, and red meaning stop. So with that, I will start us out. We all ready? All right, so I'm going to call on candidate number one for their, their opening statement.
Good evening, Saginaw. I am Charles Allen. I'm a proud lifelong resident of the city of Saginaw, the city that I believe is great and can definitely thrive and move even further forward and brighter. I am running for city council because I know that these, the people of this city who I aim to serve, need more. They need more legislation that hits their quality of life. Affordable housing is one of my main focuses because I understand that to get a three-bedroom, one-bathroom home rented in the city of Saginaw is over $2,000 right now. And with the average income in our city, and the city being at 36% poverty level, I understand that people are not able to thrive. So, I want to focus on mental health and gun violence prevention, because I understand that this city has had so many homicides in the last year, and I want to see us have a safer city. And being on the doors have taught me what my constituents that I aim to serve are feeling. They have taught me that we need more, we need legislation that changes our quality of life, we need a grocery store on the northeast and south side. Food is an issue, access to food is an issue, access to schooling is an issue. Watching the downtown and the west side thrive and not seeing those communities that are disenfranchised thrive is one of the main reasons I'm running for city council. And I believe working with all candidates running, working with any incumbent already sitting on council is the way that we thrive, because I believe united we thrive. I believe that we can do more for our city, especially after seeing so much ARPA funding coming through and seeing some of that ARPA funding being at work, but I believe that there is so much more to do, and I'm running for city council because of that.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Candidate number two.
Good evening. My name's Annie Bench. I am currently serving as Saginaw's mayor pro tem. I've been on the city council since 2011, and when I first ran, I ran because I was hoping to help contribute to the city that my kids were being raised in, and my desire was to create a city that they wanted to stay in and return to once they graduated and had a choice to go elsewhere and take their talents with them. My kids are a lot older now, and they are doing well. They love their city, and they would like to stay here, they plan to go to school here. So, for me personally, that was an accomplishment, because I've seen so many people leave. I know when I was 18, everybody wanted to leave, everybody wanted to take their talent elsewhere. We've seen a brain drain in Saginaw, we've seen talent just across the border in the township, and we have people who would like to return, but they don't have housing to return to or equitable housing, like Mr. Allen mentioned. But while I've been on council, I have worked to pass ordinances to fight blight, I've hosted gun drop-off events, I have considered myself to be a liaison between the city, the city government and the citizens that we represent. A lot of our job has to do with really mundane things, like fixing potholes and getting trees trimmed, and basic things, like why didn't my trash get picked up? It might not be like the glamorous stuff or the bigger thing, but being accessible and being somebody who people know that they can call on to get answers, even if it's not necessarily the answer they want all the time, just knowing that you have somebody who's going to call back and, and take care of your concerns. So I am running because I think that council needs a balance of experience and a balance of fresh perspective and ideas, and I think that keeping people on who have dedicated themselves and proven themselves is, is the way to go, along with adding people who have new energy and new ideas.
Thank you, Ms. Bench, very much. Candidate number three.
Hello, my name is Eric Braddock, and I'd just like to say thank everybody for coming, and all the candidates here, you know, I appreciate all the involvement here. But my name's Eric Braddock, and I'm a hometown kid here, and I was born and raised in Saginaw, Michigan. I went to Charles C. Coulter, went to Central Middle School, and graduated from Saginaw High. And after Saginaw High, I went off into the military and retired from the military, made it a career. I did two combat tours in Iraq, '01 and '09, and I was a leader in all of those situations. And now that I'm back home, I'm here to prove that I'm a leader here to, to give back to my city, and I love this city, I have a lot of pride coming from here, and I always brag about my city. If anybody know, I'm, I'm a stand-up and defender of the city, because we are different, we are peculiar as well, and I think our city can have its own identity, and I would like to see our city thrive and see us come together, all of us come together as a people, as organizations, and as families, because we're a small community, and everybody here, we have some type of connection from, from each other. So I'm here to help bring those connections together and here to, to help Saginaw move forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Candidate number four.
Good evening, everyone. First, I'll start by thanking Mr. Braddock, thank you for your service. It's a pleasure to be here this evening, and I'm honored to be running for reelection for Saginaw City Council. I will say, over the past four years, when I ran, started four years during COVID, who would run during COVID? I did, because I was starting a family. My wife and I first bought our first home. We started off with one child, now we're not, we're up to three. But we understand the value of this community, and it's been a pleasure sitting on council. I will be honest, when I ran four years ago, I had some great lofty ideas, and when I was elected, I learned my role, and I learned the value of partnership within this community, and that nothing can be accomplished one man alone, but it's community that helps this city thrive. As continuing, I joined the Housing Commission, because as I ran in four years ago, I went to advocate, and I have been advocating, even in DC, for housing affordability for our community, strengthening our economic development here in the city of Saginaw, valuing our businesses here in the city, but also transparency. Transparency, I started off doing these council recaps after, with Councilman Copeland. But what happens is when you get three children, your wife says, come home. And so, I could not be as dedicated to those council recaps like I wanted to. But still, when I had conversations with our residents, letting them know, hey, you may see this on social media, but talk to me, so I can make sure that we're sharing the information of what's going on in our city council. And finally, the real focus is a more inclusive Saginaw. I think that's one thing we all are running, because we want an inclusive Saginaw, a community where we all can have a chance to succeed, regardless of our background, and that's our responsibility. This is a team effort, and I know, we elected or with others, we can achieve that as we work as a team. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Copeland. Candidate number five.
Hi, everybody, it's amazing to see a full room here tonight. My name is Carly Rose Hammond, I'm a 28-year-old community organizer and union organizer, and I'm running for office because, like our folks holding signs in the back today, I care, because I care. It's not always easy, it's not always easy to care. But, just a little bit about me, I graduated from Oakland University pretty recently. I actually took a break in the middle, I had a full academic, full tuition academic scholarship to go there, but in 2017, I had a car accident that changed my life, and I realized that I needed to be in a place where we could tell each other the truth. I needed to go advocate in communities where there was, there was rampant injustice. And for me, that started off in Flint during their water crisis. That, that was an example of what happens when government fails its people. That is, that is an example of what happens when communication breaks down and people are bearing the brunt of inequality, of injustice. And here in Saginaw, there is an incredible amount of vulnerable citizens who are suffering every single day. There's an incredible amount, unfortunately, of violence, and it's mostly young people, it's mostly children. What are we doing? I decided to run for office because I believe I can make a difference. I want to go to work for this city. I've spent a lot of time in Lansing, I've spent a lot of time communicating with, with organizations and CEOs and people at the top of their industries, and I'm wondering why can't Saginaw be here? Why can't Saginaw be in these rooms? Why can't Saginaw be talked about? I have been driven to find that answer, and that has led me to this moment, to hear in this room in front of all of you. So I'm here to try to earn your vote, to try to earn your trust, but whether or not I'm elected, I'm here to tell you that I'm ready to build. Again, my name is Carly Rose Hammond, and I'm here to build. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hammond. Candidate number six.
Hi, my name is Councilman Osteash, and I'm running for office because I love this city and I love its people, and I want to continue to help the city grow and prosper. My concerns for the city are public safety. This is the top discussion among its residents that I speak with. I've been reviewing the city's budget and looking at its funding. I will work with our city manager to see how we can increase our force. People I speak to everywhere would like to see Saginaw have an increased Saginaw police. A small committee, a small community police program is what I would really wish for. CPOs in the summer program dedicated to our neighborhoods and interacting with our kids in its neighborhoods. CPOs are proven to help reduce crime and build relationships and trust. Growing our population is also another concern of mine and economic development. Committed to, committed to continue to work in with our developers to create affordable rents with a goal for new housing, increasing our population. Examples is the Jefferson Department Building that I have worked on. This complex is being renovated in the Cathedral District right now with rents that will be from $350 to $1,100 a month for a two-bedroom. Council helped create, also inspire new housing in the Covenant Neighborhood Association. There is also new urban and commercial in Old Town. 303 Adams will be raised with a five-story urban living with commercial and retail jetting out into Hamilton Street. Captain's Cove is also being replaced with a four-story building with a parking garage underneath. Downtown Riverfront Medical Diamond is something that needs to come to fruition. CMU's physician medical colleges coming there, a 12-story hotel, six-story urban living with commercial and retail on the first floor, six-story SVSU medical, SVSU building, a four-story behavioral and comprehensive medical facility that's bringing 1,300 jobs to the area for downtown, and also addressing Saginaw's food desert. I've been working with Senator Rivette, Representative O'Neill, a developer, a capital company, goal for one or two small markets, and I've also just been recently pulled in and working with our past mayor, Joyce Seals, on working, and working with local officials to bring a large-scale grocery store desired location east side.
Thank you, Mr. Osteash. Candidate number seven.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for coming out. My name is Jacinta JJ Seals, and I consider myself a daughter of Saginaw. I was born and raised in Saginaw, I have all my education here, a proud graduate of the Saginaw High School, class of 93, I see some of my classmates out there. Also, I'm a graduate of Delta College, year 2002. I'm a graduate of Saginaw Valley, my bachelor's and master's degree there. I've gotten everything that I've, I've possessed from Saginaw. I consider myself a product of Saginaw, and it is my time now to give back. This is why I'm running for city council. And I'm now running on the precept of it's time for us to build our infrastructure. Saginaw City, we're crumbling, and it's time for us to build the structures that need the help. Our police department, our, our fire department, our city services. Without the infrastructure, how can we have everything that we need, the housing, the grocery stores and everything? The people will come if we build it. So let's build up the infrastructure so that we can have the people come into our city, so we have the housing, so we have everything that we need. And so if we build this and build it correctly, and one of the things that I'm also running is to lift the tax cap. That's one of the reasons why our infrastructure is, is not where it should be, is because we're not receiving the dollars that we should be receiving as far as money is coming in from the tax levies. So that's one of the precepts that I'm running on at this time. So hopefully everyone will consider me as a representative of Saginaw City Council, and thank you for coming out today. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Seals. Number eight.
Good evening. My name is Charles Anthony Suez, a lifelong resident of the city of Saginaw. Born, raised, worked in Saginaw. Class of 1986 Saginaw High graduate. Weber Middle School, North Middle School, Delta College, Ferris State University, Bowling Green University, well-educated man. When I'm running for city council, not for myself, I'm running for you, the people. Nothing I can do without the people and the citizens of Saginaw. Everybody in Saginaw see and know where we live. Everybody in Saginaw see and know where we live. Everybody see the disproportionate on size of town. We need quality and fairness in each sector of the city of Saginaw. When I say that, I mean, we need a grocery store in our community. We should not have to drive across town to go get fresh fruit and vegetables for our parents, for our parents, our grandparents, or our children. We shouldn't. We should have to be, we should be able to do that right here in our community where we pay taxes, where you pay your taxes. You pay your taxes, and she'll be able to go to the grocery store and go see. Saginaw, Saginaw, it's not as bad as everybody envisioned it. Saginaw is not bad because everybody in this room is from Saginaw, we live here. Yes, we have some things that's wrong, yes, we need some things that can be fixed. If you vote for me, I can't promise you the grocery store's coming, the taxes gonna be lowered, but I can promise you that I can work very hard for you, not for me, for you. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Candidate number nine.
Mike Thompson. Thank you to the League and to Dr. Gavin and the SGTV for providing this forum. My reason for being a city council candidate is that I offer ideas that have not been heard from others, mainly to raise the city income tax before we add another property tax by getting rid of those cats, do that income tax first. My personal reason for being a candidate is simply to see what it is like to be an elected official with opinions after so many years as a neutral Saginaw news reporter. Also personally, the cause for this mask is not COVID, but dental work in progress. Thirdly, I am reading this because I am better at reading than speaking. But enough about myself. The city income tax is 1.5% for residents, 0.75 is the only work in the city. With a fraction of an increase, round them off at 2% and 1. This tiny hike would produce more than $5 million per year. In contrast, lifting the 1979 property caps would give us less than half of that sum. The income tax has not been raised since 1989. Meanwhile, property taxes go up every year, not so much from City Hall as for all those small ones at the county, for everything from sheriff deputies to mosquito control, and most lately for local streets and roads. Plus now we have two school bonds at once, with Thompson, Middle, and Loomis still on the docket. We should wait until then to do the tax caps. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson, I appreciate that. Candidate number ten.
Hi, I am Heidi Wiggins, and I'm running for Saginaw City Council. Mike fixed it, yeah. Thank you all for being here tonight, thank you for the invitation from the League of Women Voters. I am a proud resident of the city of Saginaw, born and raised here, as many of the other people running have mentioned. I care about Saginaw. When I was growing up, there was this, this charity, it was called Fanify. It stood for Find a Need and Fill It. And my mom actually instilled that in me, and that's how I live pretty much every day of my life. I try to find a need, and I try to meet that need, and I think Saginaw needs some help. There has been growth, and I'm proud of that growth that I've seen, but I also see neglect, and I think that running on the council, this is like the meat and the bones of how things get done here in Saginaw, and I want to make a difference for the people of Saginaw, for my kids, for my little grandbabies. I want to see growth on the north, the east, the south side, as well as the west side. I want to have safe places for my family and your families. I think when you feel safe and you're proud of where you are, growth naturally happens. People build, they stay, they build, and, and they want to contribute and give back to the community. So we just have to start there, and I want to be a part of that. I want to build transparency and trust back with the people of Saginaw. I think when I was out knocking doors, a lot of people didn't feel heard, and I want to be the voice of you, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wiggins. Candidate number eleven.
Good evening, Saginaw. I'm Reggie Williams, and I am running for the two-year partial term seat as a write-in. I believe I'm the only candidate up here as a write-in. So it is important, if you would like for me to be in office, that you write me in on the ballot. With that being said, born- With that being said, born and raised in Saginaw, I was, I was, I know there may be some here that live in a township, ten township school. I was forced to go to township school, so I didn't get to go to Saginaw High in Arthurhill, but I've spent over forty years living in this city, working for this city, coaching in this city. One thing that I love about currently serving on council is the idea of teamwork, that you need your team in order to get something done. You cannot do it by yourself. What I've learned in the four years, that there have been promises made that people could not back up. It's important for us to understand and know that you don't get anything done up here without the assistance of your colleagues. It has to happen that way. What I would like for people in Saginaw to understand, and what I would like to continue to do, is to continue educating on how municipal government works. What's our role as council? What is it that we can and we cannot do? That's important for us all to understand. With that being said, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. And our final candidate.
Hello, everyone. My name is Tobias Young. I'm a twenty-five-year UAW employee. I started out working here, and I left here, my job left here in two thousand and six, but I never left here. I've continued to stay in this community. I've opened businesses. I've purchased properties from the city, and I've, you know, I've, have a unique set of skills that I think could help this community out. You know, I'm running on a platform of, of homeownership, and with me purchasing properties from the city and opening businesses, you know, I've acquired a unique set of skills, and I've dealt with the city in different ways, and I can see there's a lot of inefficiencies that makes it more intimidating for residents to acquire properties. And I think that kind of removing some of those efficiencies or addressing them rather would help with increasing homeownership. And I'm comfortable with just, you know, running on a platform of homeownership, because when we increase homeownership, it affects our community. It attacks blight. You know, it, it will bring down the price of housing, you know, so I'm just comfortable with running on that. I'm also a licensed realtor, and I've had many people reach out to me about housing and what should I buy, and investments and things like that. So over the years, you know, I've acquired, you know, a, a unique set of skills that I think if I lend that to the city council, I could be really effective. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm glad that we got to know a little bit about each of you before we get into some policy level questions. I did want to underscore some of the things that I heard through the, your responses that are not policy level, that are heartening, I think, for anybody to hear, that we have good candidates to select from. I heard the word "we" often, "I care," "love," "growth," "team," "hope," and "build" said by multiple candidates, and so I think we have an excellent slate to listen to tonight who has Saginaw in their heart. The first question is a lengthy one, because the first part is going to give some context. It's not meant to trick any of you, but I'm going to take a minute to read it and set you up for listening before I do read it. But it is about property taxes and income taxes. Based on an MLive article written in January twenty twenty-three, a Saginaw City Council Committee will strategize how to educate the public about the city's forty-four-year-old property taxes. It's a move that could signal a renewed effort to abolish both the seven point five mil levy cap and the three point eight million dollar cap, whichever is lower, that Saginaw voters approved in nineteen seventy-nine. Since nineteen seventy-nine, the city has approved a seven point five mil levy for public safety and a separate bill for rubbish. The city enacted its local income tax on September twenty-eighth nineteen sixty-four. It allows one point five percent for residents and point seven five percent for non-residents. In twenty twenty-one, fourteen million dollars was collected in twenty, and in twenty twenty-two, sixteen million was collected, with over sixty percent from non-residents. The city has approved numerous tax breaks to businesses over the years, which impact all taxing units. The most notable is General Motors. The tax breaks impact all city of Saginaw taxing units, education, transportation, and county services. So here's the question. Share your position on strategy on property tax cap, local income tax, and corporate tax breaks. Ms. Seals.
Okay. It kind of goes back into the first question of why I was running. The bottom line to one of the precepts of why I was running was the tax cap itself, and this is one of the reasons, the property tax and the local tax, even corporate tax breaks. The levies were pulling, I mean, there were over forty percent of the money was from the levies were going to the schools. I think just slightly over twenty percent was going toward the police and fire department, and the rest of it was going other places, being collected by the city. And I'm like, wow, we're only collecting so much money. We're only getting so much of this money that's being collected from our city residents. We're not even getting the full pot. We're getting pennies. And I'm like, this has to change if we want to see change. And so there's something has to be done about that when it comes to the collection of taxes from our own citizens. We should be getting the bulk of this money, even though there are, we have library tax in there, also other taxes that are in there, like someone said earlier about the, the two school taxes for their bonds, and I understand that. But some people.
Thank you, Ms. Seals. Number two, the pink.
That would be me.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Wiggins.
Anything that hasn't been revisited since nineteen seventy-nine or before that just doesn't make sense to me. The landscape of Saginaw has changed so much, and the needs of Saginaw has changed so much. No one wants to pay higher taxes. No one does. But those taxes can provide services that we need that will improve our everyday lives. I, you know, if, the, the bulk of it can't all, all just be put on the citizens, though. I know the tax breaks for corporate is necessary to bring industry in, but there has to be a balance. So I have to, we have to figure out a way to make that make sense. So like I said, if it's nineteen seventy-nine, it needs to be re-looked at, you know. Something has to change so that we get the resources into our community that we need.
Thank you, Ms. Wiggins. We could hear you fine. I'm just, as you're talking, you might want to pull the mic closer to you. We, we did hear you fine, just so you know. But.
They push it back.
Project yourself.
Or perhaps. Oh, well, then don't pull the mic. Project very loudly. Whoever had number three would go next.
I'll have number three. All right, let me speak up. However, what our tax, the reality is that we broke. Our city is broke. That's the reality of it. And if we're going to compete with any other city in America, we need to probably release the tax cap. We need to find a way that it won't be a tax burden just on our small businesses, our business owners, our, our property owners, and our families, and our working-class citizens. But we do need to look at how our city is operating under this budget. We have to, we have to pretty much rely on grant funding from organizations. We have to rely on organizations to help with our parks, funding our parks and our recreations. And so we got to come together, let's say we're stronger together. We have to come together, together, and also we have to educate our community on this tax cap, because it's forty-four years old. So if it hasn't been released after so many tries, so we, we may have to come, come and educate the community, and, and we need help from everybody to do that, and it can't really come from the city government officially. But however, we do need to look at our city revenue. It's important if we want those resources that everybody's looking for, our after-school programs, our parks, our roads, you know, and so at the same time, we are seeing some, some improvements. I see Seventeenth getting fixed. I've seen Sheridan getting fixed. I see the curbs getting fixed on James Street. So, you know, we see people that's, we see the community and see people that's trying to get this done, so we, we need to come together on that and educate the community.
Thank you, Mr. Raddick. Number four. Thank you, Ms. Wiggins.
A forty-four-year non-increase. And like you say, our city is broke. We do need to find a way to increase money, but not tax our citizens to do. I look at the tax roll, and I see we have the library, the schools, Delta College, other schools, the police, the fire truck. Everything is on our tax bill, but the money isn't coming back to us, the people in the city. So educating our people, I truly do believe that we have to go out, educate our people. Go out to some of these neighborhood associations, talk to the people. Don't talk at the people, talk with the people, and educate them on how we need to raise, raise the millage, so we can be able to take care of what we need to take care of in our city. Yes, we have some roads getting fixed. Yes, we have some buildings being built. Yes, we have some new businesses coming in, but we giving them all tax breaks, but the citizens are not getting any breaks. The people need breaks, and you are the people.
Thank you, Mr. Sledge. Candidate number six.
That's me. So in terms of the property tax cap, you know, we, we have, there, the, the city cannot lift the tax cap themselves. It needs to go onto the ballot, and the citizens need to do that through a citizens referendum, which is difficult to do. We actually have tried at the city of Saginaw in the past a few times, and it's failed by two-thirds every time. However, what's interesting is that I can't find a single millage or bond proposal, funding local schools, funding local police, that hasn't passed in the city of Saginaw in maybe the past forty years. So that tells us something. It tells us that there's a trust issue in terms of general budget versus specific bond and millage issues. So we need to address that trust issue with spending with, with our local government before citizens will ever vote yes for that. But I will commit myself to, next time that's on the ballot, I'll knock doors for it, I'll be out there for it, because it is something that our citizens need, and it is regressive tax policy. Now, when it comes to our income tax, the best way to increase the gains from our income tax, which by the way, we get more money from our income tax than we do from property taxes in the city of Saginaw, which is almost unheard of, unheard of at the city level. We are very, very unique that way. The way we can increase that is by building housing. We have a housing crisis, but somehow in the city of Saginaw, we also have a vacant land and vacant housing crisis. So there is so much money out there, so much money at the state and federal level for building more housing, getting grants to build housing, that we are missing out on opportunities. The city of Saginaw currently does not have an affordable housing plan. We need to have one. Also, with corporate tax breaks, we need to do better, issuing corporate tax breaks. We need to have community benefit agreements. They're called CBAs. We need to have clawbacks for organizations and companies that do not fulfill their promises. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hammond. Candidate number six.
Seven. I was six.
Seven. As soon as I started taking, keeping track over here is when I messed up. I was fine. I better not do that. Candidate number seven. Thank you.
Yes, Tobias Young again. As far as the corporate tax breaks, I know we did that in the past, and I personally don't have a problem with it. I think that they should have their promise laid out, and there should be repercussions if they don't fulfill that promise, so that, you know, we're not funding corporations and they don't live up to their end of the bargain, and then we're left, you know, without that revenue. As far as lifting the tax cap, I do agree that it needs to be lifted, but I think there's a, a struggle with that, because residents want transparency, and then they want to feel better about what you're doing with the money you already have before we give you some more money. And then also, if I lift the tax cap and, and give you money, where are you going to spend it at? And a lot of residents feel like they're left out of where the money is being spent. So, you know, I think that transparency of where the money will go will help it pass. It needs to pass, but the information needs to be out there, and it needs to be spent in a more inclusive manner. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Candidate number eight. This question.
Thank you. I need an hour to talk about this. So anyways, I'm going to get going. I'm going to talk pretty fast. So let's, first of all, OPRA's and corporate tax. That, at least we get to, within OPRA, at least we get to collect fifty percent of the taxes, and it goes in, into a separate fund. So when you look at our general fund, it's four point one million dollars, and that's why you see not three point eight million dollars there. So we are collecting some extra on that, and somebody brought up no tax breaks for the residents when I talked about in Neighborhood and Pride Zone. We just gave our residents around the Covenant Neighborhood a tax incentive, or a tax free. So those residents are getting a tax incentive for build and renovations. So when you also look at lifting the tax cap, generally, if we did it right now, it's about two million dollars that that would generate an additional revenue for the city, so it's not really a lot. It's going to be a slow growth as we go forward and look at that. And actually, this year, we had to reduce our millage rate because of the, the three point eight million that we are capped at. So it's really kind of a struggle when you look at it. But you're right, it's a lot of education for our residents right now. So if you take a home value that's about twenty thousand dollars in the city, if we lifted the cap, you're talking five dollars and forty-four cents a month. So double that for a home value that's at forty thousand. I love numbers. And so it's right, we've got to talk to people and educate them, that this is not something that is just going to, right away, that's, it's going to cost you a lot out of your pocket. Looking at the income tax, that is, I, I think that's just where we are right now, because you can't, you can't take sixteen million dollars in income tax and just replace that with something that you don't have. Okay.
Thank you. I'm sure there'll be more time to talk about.
It's a, it's a big subject.
Another question. Number nine.
I'm number nine. Thank you to Councilman Williams for telling me to turn my nameplate around. Get some votes. The way I look at the tax caps is that it really is, as President Obama would say, a dumb law, but the damage has not been that great, and the revenue would not be that great, because our property tax base is so weak. You know, the city, if you do one million, you get six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. If you go to the county, same tax, you get six and a half million. So that's why in my opening remarks, I placed the income tax first. We should still lift the caps, but not rely on them or overrate them to our residents for their effect, otherwise people will think, well, you passed, you got the tax caps off there like you wanted, how come we're still in trouble? It's not that much money. It's just the principle of the thing to me. When I look back and remember nineteen seventy-nine, those people who passed it would just like the Trump people today. That would be the main reason to get rid of it, because of the motivation to pass it was very prejudiced. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Number ten.
That is me, Charles Allen, and I'm very excited to answer this question. One of the reasons that I, I want to answer this from a citizen's perspective, because we're all running for council, because we believe as citizens that the city can do better. I believe that. So how can I trust that we raise a tax cap if I don't have trust in where the, the equity gaps are? There's so many equity gaps right now across the city. It's really hard to trust someone to raise a tax cap. The work that needs to be done to be strategic about this, it has to be a campaign. Carly Hammond is right, we have to get on the doors, because we have to encourage the citizens on why this would be good for them. We're, transparency is one thing, honesty is another, but literally bringing it to their doors is the most important thing that we do, because they want to know how this changes my quality of life. And I want to help them know that, because me personally, when you talk about raising taxes on, in any, any form or fashion, I get nervous, because I'm already struggling. And I know that there are people in this city that are struggling, and I don't want to talk at the people about this issue. I want to explain. I want to have deep conversations, because that's what changes people's mind. We have to have these deep conversations at the doors and with the citizens of Saginaw, so we can come up with a strategy that works for them, not present to them, plan with them.
Thank you very much, Mr. Allen. Candidate number eleven.
That would be me. George Copeland. I appreciate this question, and one of the things, being on council, I'm a words person, and so I'm very serious about the words that we release. And I know a lot of times we say we're broke. I like to say we're balanced, because the city of Saginaw has been in a place when we were broke. We had an emergency manager. We had some serious times in the city of Saginaw, and we saw a time. But through our state, our current city team, we have been getting approved by our budgets for the past fourteen years, and I would ask someone to fact-check me, if we can do fact-checks today, for the, for the past fourteen years. So I like to say we are balanced, but the truth is, we do have to address our property tax. And I don't want to be repeating what everyone has said. I'm number eleven, so of course I'm going to repeat what people have said, but at this point, it has to be community-focused, and there has. But at this point, it has to be community focused, and there has to be a balance. And I know when we think about community focus and we have to talk about the fear when we talk about numbers and address and say, hey, I, when I was elected in twenty twenty, that was my first conversation. I needed to understand the budget. And when I saw the budget and saw how much of our city's services are provided by grants due to us not having additional income, that is where I had to learn that we have to continue to have this conversation. And I know we're seeing the community, but there's also another step that we can take. If we see that it has failed two times, we can also contact our state legislators that this can be a state policy as well to remove tax cap in communities.
Thank you, Mr. Copeland. And candidate number twelve.
That would be me. I wholeheartedly agree with Councilman Copeland. This is something that we can be advocating for at a state level. If it's a matter of trust, I, I don't necessarily believe that simply because we are, we have consistently won awards. Our budget, our staff, they consistently win awards for their balanced budget. They know how to manage the money. It's simply that there is not enough. My mother, who is here tonight, she is one of the people who worked on every single campaign to lift the tax cap. And one thing they didn't listen to her on then, and one thing I hope they listen to me now, is if it is a trust issue, pick one cap and go after it. Demonstrate to the public that we can get it done. Demonstrate that we can be trusted with it. But I think the citizens want the services. That's why we pass these millages. That's why we have this à la carte government. Oprah's are uniquely effective to us because of the tax cap. We might have more room to have CBAs and argue with people. The other issue is, and we'll get to it with the Back the Blue Initiative, is the council is there to put things on the ballot. We are there to see if it qualifies for the ballot. Do the citizens do what they need to do to get it on the ballot? Unfortunately, we can't go out there and full-throatedly advocate for or against something, which doesn't mean that we can't advocate or explain the, the benefits of something passing. But this has to be a citizen-led initiative, and that means we have to get enough citizens together who have to understand a complicated issue and have them lead it. It can't necessarily be something that council leads on. And as far as the tax, the, the income tax, I hesitate to raise those on folks because we have people who live at, below the poverty line at such a high rate.
Thank you, Ms. Beck. Somehow, we've skipped you, Mr. Williams.
That's, that's fine, considering that everyone, we have a lot of good answers. There's not much more that I can add to it, except for the fact that I would be in support of lifting the tax cap and coming up with strategies and plans along with fellow councilmen and women to do so. So with that, everyone has said everything else. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. So we're moving from what could be systemic to grant fund question, talking specifically about the American Rescue Plan Act monies. I'll give you some more context and then obviously ask the question at the end again. This will be the yellow card for color in front of you. So on March eleventh, two thousand twenty-one, as you know, President Biden signed the American Rescue Plan Act of two thousand twenty-one into law. The one point nine trillion dollar package based on President Biden's American Rescue Plan is intended to combat the COVID-nineteen pandemic, address its economic impact on the community, and lay the foundation for a strong and equitable recovery. Saginaw received fifty-two million to reinvest in the city from that act. There were many recommendations that came from a, a committee of residents and non-residents appointed by the city council. I'm not going to run over all of them, but they were to invest in multiple different parts of the city, many of which you've already heard from. Based on public information, what is your position on how the funds will address economic impact on our community and lay the foundation for a strong and equitable recovery? So I'll call on yellow number one first.
That would be me. Again, Heidi Wiggins. I'm sorry, what, what was the, the final question?
Could you tell us, based on the public information regarding how the monies are to be spent, what your position is on how they will be spent and how they will address economic impact on our community and lay the foundation for a strong and equitable recovery?
What I can say about like the ARPA funds, when I was speaking with the people of, of the city, there is a lot of either miscommunication or misunderstanding. People felt slighted with the ARPA funds and how they were distributed or not distributed. The after effects and not seeing the growth that I guess they were expecting, people were expecting. So with that being said, like the, if there's, there was something that went awry. I don't know if it was just a bad communication or what it was, but fifty-two million dollars, I don't see fifty-two million dollars represented in the, in changes in the city of Saginaw. I could be wrong about that, but I don't see it. And the people that I talked to on the streets of Saginaw, knocking on doors, they also did not see it. So I hope, being on the council or being a part of the council, I could either increase communication, what the funds are specifically for, how they can be given out and dispersed, how you can actually take part in, in those funds, or how it could grow our city in a tangible way and not just in one, one kind of event. So that would, that's, that's how I feel about it. Wasn't very happy about it.
Thank you, Ms. Wiggins. Number two.
Is this yellow?
For yellow?
Oh, that's me. Just a clarifying question. Are we talking about funds that were already spent?
Or planned to be.
Okay. I think the city of Saginaw had an awesome opportunity to give back to the community. They did a, a great job bringing in an outside entity to help them to determine how the money were supposed to be allocated to create the equity amongst the citizens. Going to go to higher, higher? Okay, thank you. To create equity between who gets, from who gets the monies, I think bringing in the outside entity to help them make those decisions was a great plan for the, for the city council. And I think it also, for the community, I think it gave them a sense of, you know, the city was attempting to make a stand for, we want to support our entire community. They were able to make decisions on how they were going to spend it, but unfortunately, they didn't stick to that plan all the way through. And so I believe that if, in the future, if we do decide to go that route, then we need to stick to what we decide to stick to and whatever we plan as a group.
Thank you, Ms. Sledge. Yellow number three.
Yep, thank you. So all of the money has been allocated. The city of Saginaw, per the Treasury, did calculate what our losses were for the city. So there was money that we used to do some major renovations that the city of Saginaw would have never been able to do, like City Hall. You see all the construction going on around here. We have pipes that are literally leaking in the, in the brick. So there's eight million dollars we allocated to take care of our HVAC system. Cemetery improvements, the citizens wanted that taken care of, so we, we spent a million dollars doing that. We had IT services, IT services that if the city's servers, servers went down, we couldn't even run City Hall, so we have backup systems now. We put two and a half million dollars into behavioral mental health. We heard that in the community. And then one, one of the main things, youth, we put ten million dollars into youth. The NAAB, First War Community Center, the Mexican-American Council. I can't even think of all of them right now. But in, and if you visit some of these centers, the stuff in the program that they, that they are doing with our, our youth is phenomenal. We put a million, almost a million dollars into the Hunger Solutions Center over there with the soup kitchen. So right now, I think that's going to make a huge impact. And I think one of the most successful programs that we did outside of HUD funding that you can, with home renovations, we replaced two hundred and twenty-five furnaces, three hundred and thirty-five roofs, and Consumers Power teamed up with us, and they were doing hot waters and hot water heaters. So that was an eight point one million, almost eight point two million dollars that we put into people's homes. And when you put a roof on somebody's house, that house is good for twenty-five years.
Thank you, Mr. Ostache. Number four, yellow.
That's me, Charles Allen. First of all, I think ARPA funding is one of the biggest issues and topics that's been in the city for the last two years. I think because the people weren't able to see the growth that Bill so candidly spoke about. I think when you speak to block grant funding and fifty-two million dollars of ARPA funding, no matter how much the city took back for itself, people wanted to see growth. And being that the dollars were given on reimbursement funds only to start, it didn't help a lot of small businesses or small organizations, I mean, grow right away. And the information was not readily, readily available. And I know that the portal was, it was very difficult for people to apply for these funds. And then after they applied, there's places that ARPA funders have helped, like women of colors, but they came in here multiple times to get the council to vote in their favor. I just want to be very clear, the equity in the ARPA funding process was not there. There was some issues, and I think eleven people running for city council proves that. We definitely need to focus on what the people want. And I think the people wanted that funding allocated differently. And I think they have shown that by the way they've showed up to these meetings every time it was a discussion. So I think it's good to look at that because that's our and. We can do something better the next time, even the force of the allocations in the two weeks.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Candidate number five.
Yes, Tobias Young again. The ARPA funding that we're speaking on, that's one of the things that stood out to me as well with me developing and, and knowing how much things cost. I had the chance to sit back and look at them throwing away a lot of money at some situations. And I said, oh, that's way too much. So, you know, when we get to the situation of trying, that's when I bring back the comment I made earlier about before you give more money, you know what to do with the money that you have. So when you get to trying to ask for more money and a citizen seeing how you just threw away a lot of money that should have been spread farther through the community, then that's where you get the pushback. And you get the inefficiencies, and I think that's where you need the, a diverse panel, you know, on city councils. So when funding do come through, it spreads out through the community, and it's just not in certain sections of the community and is used up. And then you have a people, a lot of, a lot of the residents feeling left out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Candidate number six.
That's me. The ARPA funding did some good and it did some bad. It made some people happy, it made some people sad. Some people got what they want, some people didn't. To be honest, and once again, I'm up here speaking on behalf of the people. There's a lot of people in this room that don't think that it was done fairly, and too much was done on other side of town than it wasn't done on this side of town. We got to be transparent in what we're doing with this money. I truly believe that the brothers and sisters of this council really believe that they did the best they could with their money. But the disinformation and wrong information and the citizens not understanding what's going on made it hard for the people to believe that this fifty-two million dollars is just gone now. And what do we see? We still see rubbish. We still don't have grocery store. Fairgrounds still over there, overgrown. The GM plant's still sitting there, overgrown, but we have fifty-two million dollars. What did it do? I heard about Hunger Solution. I heard about all these other things. I hear, keep hearing about Covenant. What did it do for the east side of town?
Thank you, Mr. Sledge. Candidate number seven.
I'm number seven. I think the council members, the incumbents themselves, if they could do over, they would do some things differently the way we challengers would if we had had that responsibility because that was a hard job. My nitpick is specific, kind of an example of how things can go wrong. Mission in the City applied for fix up their park on Sixth and James, and the Guide House consultant said, well, the church owns the land, so you can't do it. We can't give money to a church. And nobody else asked Pastor Tatum, it seems, but me, would you be willing to transfer the ownership of the Mission in the City property to the Mission in the City 501(c)(3)? And he said right away, he said, yeah, of course. But everybody on the, not everybody, but many on the council are still saying, well, Guide House told us we couldn't do it. Are they listening? That should still be corrected. Mission in the City should have a share of the funds. Fifty-two million was plenty to take care of everybody, give them a little seed money. That would be my first motion on the council to correct that. Guide House also messed up the proposal book really bad, and if they're going to continue working for the city, they should fix it up.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Candidate number eight.
Thank you for this question. That is me. Yes. I first want to start off with, it was a pleasure to, this was a moment of time in our city, and I'm thankful for the honor to sit there at council to really learn from this. And I must state that from the beginning, I asked for a matrix during the work that I do in education and being very frank and honest that I've never worked with grant dollars before. I do know that a matrix is an opportunity to provide equity. And so being that we as a council made a decision, I am going to, I have to stand with that decision. But we have seen where the lack of the matrix has proven disproportionate allocations that people may see. But I'm thankful for the opportunity to sit on the food insecurity where my focus was researched. Because I was inexperienced working with these type of dollars, I needed data. I need information. I had to balance the voice, but also the data to make sure that we're making the best decision for our community. I, in my first term, made a lot of emotional decisions, but I had to learn that with that emotion, it has to be balanced with facts. And we see that, yes, we put money towards to clear the fairgrounds, but there's still work to do. So everything that we have done, it is a start. The focus now is, how do we continue to leverage what we have brought in to bring in additional dollars? Because funding is still coming in, but I think and hope that we have also as a team learned that a matrix to provide equity for all will be beneficial for our community.
Thank you, Mr. Copeland. Candidate number nine.
That is me, Reggie Williams, and I concur with pretty much everything that has been said already. I would like to say that I sat on the youth bucket for allocations when it came down to city council, the ten million dollar bucket. And as Mr. Sledge said, there, people are not going to be hap, happy, sad. It's really a no-win situation when it comes to trying to win everyone over. It didn't matter who was on council, whatnot. This was a new situation. I do believe that more good was done than bad with the ARPA funding. And as someone stated, if we could do it over, there's a lot that could be done over, a lot. But at that point, still, there's no satisfying everyone. But with the monies that have been allocated, overall, I am, as a current council member, I am happy with that. When it comes down to the women of colors, there's a, not just them, but there are other organizations where there are things that have happened in the background on their side that could have been or should have been taken care of, where council would have been able to go along with immediately versus a constant recurrence in council chambers for allocations. So with that being said, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Candidate number ten.
That is me, yes. When it comes to ARPA funding, there's something that I said a lot in those early days. Well, I, I actually worked for what's an organization called the Michigan Revenue Table at the time. So we studied tax policy in the state of Michigan. We studied the Headley Amendment. We studied a lot of, a lot of funding opportunities. And when ARPA came down the line, our entire organization shifted. When we heard that that was in, like cooking inside of Washington, D.C., we immediately shifted our attention to that. I attended, I attended Department of Treasury presentations back in, back in, in March when the interim rule first came out. I went on the radio in May and June, two thousand twenty-one, to talk about ARPA and the amazing opportunity that it presented because I felt like we weren't talking about it enough. And I feel like the, the greatest issue here is that the citizens were not given the opportunity to dream. Were not given the opportunity to, to sit down with city planners, with, with city leadership and say, this is what we want to do. There were no town halls. There was one special session where it started at nine AM, but public comment, people didn't realize that, until they got there, that the public comment period wasn't until one PM after lunch. Everyone had already left. So I feel like a lot of- So I feel like a lot of the issues here are that people were, were, were coming to council again and again and again and not being listened to because the process had already been decided, mostly by Guide House, which we are going to be paying over a million dollars, I think we already have. And I'm still confused as to what their role actually is. So I, I think that there was a big injustice done here with this funding. It's about transformation, and I fail to see that.
Thank you, Ms. Sledge. Candidate number eleven.
Thank you, that's me. First and foremost, I do want to correct something that was said here at the table. Right out the gate, there was, you know, consternation over whether we were going to do reimbursement dollars because typically with grants like this, we do reimbursement as opposed to advances. But we did end up going with advances, even though several of us were concerned about that. We provided advances to everybody who needed them. In fact, that is one of the reasons why we're going to have to pay back money to the federal government for advancing people money who could not account for it once it was spent. The other thing too, I would agree, there was a lot of misinformation. And unfortunately, you know, people who like to misinform seize on a vacuum and they go out there. And when you don't have leaders who are all speaking in a clearer, clearer voice, speaking in unison, and there's been a lot of division. When you give people fifty-two million dollars and say, decide how to spend this, you're going to get a lot of competing ideas. I think a lot of the ARPA money was spent on a friends and family first opportunity. I think there were a lot of promises made, kind of like when people run for office and they make promises because they may mean well, but they don't necessarily know what the role is. And I think that that caused a tremendous amount of upset and anger because there was already misinformation out there in the public about how the money could be spent and what it could be spent on, what lost revenue actually meant, before the council even got to decide what, what approach we were going to take to it. But we did a lot of good despite nine competing interests, despite many people weighing, you know, weighing in, despite not having a metric. We all did, I think, what we, the best we could, hurting eight, you know, nine people in the same direction.
Thank you, Ms. Sledge. And candidate number twelve.
Number twelve. Has its advantages. If you didn't have an answer, you can find one. With, as far as I know, far as the ARPA, the ARPA fund is, money has already been allocated and everyone has, they have to like December 2026 to spend it. I think I was, you know, I'd be trying to pay attention to the city councils, but to the meetings. But however, though, I know that everybody up here had talked about, you know, the flaws of it and it has been some good. But I think now what's important is that we, we, you know, I'm not sure where all the money has went though. But as a community though, the money went somewhere, so we need to stand behind it. You know, whatever, if, because, you know, it's, everybody's sensitive about money. If you didn't get none, you know, I'm sensitive about money. If I didn't get my money, everybody's sensitive about money, you know, and the families and the companies. And so, you know, if it don't go your way, we, we find a way to complain. But it's over. I, I feel like we need to get past it and start standing behind, you know, standing behind those organizations and those organizations that receive those fundings. Because there, you have organizations that's here like Saginaw STEM. You know, it's called Saginaw STEM for a minute, for a reason, it's for our people. And so we need to, you know, tap into those, to those organizations that's already received those ARPA funds. And plus too, I wanted to say the ARPA fund was a rescue plan too, to COVID. And so I know a lot of people probably was coming here and looking to build nonprofit organizations. I've seen people coming here trying to, I was, I was a commissioner, I was on the commission committee. But people trying to build different things, but it was about, about rescuing the community.
Thank you, Mr. Braddock. That concludes the question for the ARPA plan. We're moving into also a ballot proposal called Back the Blue Public Safety Priority. And I'll give you a quick summary of it. The, the final question of it is pretty simple, and this is for the green cards on you. The question is going to be, what is your position on this proposal and why? I'll give you a quick summary of the bullet points without the narrative attached to it. But the Back the Blues Public Safety Priority would require officers and firefighters and EMTs and first responders of all kinds to wear body worn, worn cameras to mitigate risk by providing additional benefits to first responders, to allow for emergency interim family benefits for those first responders who are injured, and to allow crowdfunding support to be legalized for those who are injured in, those first responders injured in the line of duty, to honor fallen heroes, should those people have deceased in their line of duty, as well as victim compensation if they become victims to violent crime with regard, in, in the line of duty. And, and that, actually, that concludes the major points of the bill. So the question is, what is your stance on that bill and why? Again, it's the green card that we're going with. So that being said, I would ask for Green Number One to respond first about their stance on that bill.
That is me, Charles Allen. I'm glad to respond on this. And I just want to be clear, the things that you read are great things and they, and they all sound great for the community. They really do, when it's that by, when it's, when that's all you're hearing. My problem with the bill is that it was added to the ballot and it's legislation from people who are not in this community. They're not people that are walking this community, making decisions. So I'm trying to figure out why we're putting this on a ballot when we need more research done on this. And it's just, it's just too vague for me to say that I agree with the Back to Blue at this time. There's more details that's in, in the bill that needs to be hashed out. And I feel like for me personally, I would have to say no to that and move forward when we can do this together as a city and from people from our city doing this bill, not just people from Saginaw Township. That's where the meeting is, they bring in people to talk about the bill. This is not a great thing for our city. With that being said, I think I got a little more time left. I want to make sure we know I was not wrong. We did do the ARPA funding on reimbursement funds only to start, that is the truth. And then we changed down the road, that is the truth. So make sure that is corrected as well. And also, we forced allocations of the funding two weeks before. It, it was just a two-week thing, it was a decision that was made. And then we forced all of those allocations to be done before the new council came into play. So I just want to put that out there. We paid eight hundred thousand dollars for Guide House to start and over a million to beat.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Candidate number two.
That's me. So about a month and a half ago, I got a call from a local reporter and asked me if I knew anything about this petition called Back the Blue. And at the time, I did not. So the first place I looked, which is any, any researcher does, I looked at the county campaign finance website, which everybody should be able to find. It's through the elections website on Saginaw County. And I discovered that the Back the Blue petition received forty thousand dollars in funding from Georgia from a nonprofit I couldn't find any documentation on, spent at an LLC in the city of Saginaw at somebody's house with no documentation at the city or the county level or the state level with that LLC's name. It was very interesting. So I, I will wholeheartedly say, I do not support this petition because I don't know where it comes from. I did a lot more research on it. I posted that research on my website because it's all public information, which is carlyforSaginaw.com. But I posted, I also requested from the county clerk's office, the full ballot language, which I encourage you to look at because the issue is, there is no funding mechanisms. There's actually no promises here. It says, the city intends to prioritize these things. And the issue with that is, you could get the city in a big pickle. Basically, I just see this causing a lot of legislation, or rather, a lot of litigation. I will also tell you that not a single police union or firefighters' union knew about this petition or supports us. This sprung up out of a, a funding scheme that is tracked through, like I said, multiple states. And I believe, oh, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hannity. Candidate number three.
Yes, Tobias Young. And I concur with other candidates. It was, I felt my feelings were the same. You know, it was vague, I didn't understand it. And when something is vague and the information is kind of iffy, you know, I looked it up and I didn't know where it came from either and I had to research a little bit. So, you know, my stance is a no on that as well. And I mean, the way that I looked at it, when it said increased body cams, I said, sometimes they don't even use the ones they have. That's what I, that's the first thing that I said. I said, if they don't have to use the ones they have, why give them some money for some more? You know, but, you know, that's my stance on it, so no. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate number four.
Reggie Williams. And as I understand it from our city attorney, we would have been, we were constitutionally mandated to put it on the ballot. There's no way for us to get around that because it was petition-driven. And I guess behind the scenes, how things were going from the governor's office to our county clerk's office, we had to put it on the ballot because it was petition-driven, from my understanding. As far as my stance goes, I'm going to be honest, I don't know if I can answer that. Even though I'm a candidate, I'm still currently on council. And I don't, I do not believe I can give my stance as a council member. But I do have one, so. Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. Candidate number five.
Thank you. I'm going to concur with everything that Councilman Williams just said. We are elected officials and we cannot sway ballot initiatives that are on there. But I will state some facts. According to the MLive article, it states that it does nothing to our taxes. Also, it said, we as city leaders would have, we wouldn't have to do anything. It's just an advisement, it's not a mandate. Like the councilman was also talking about, that the governor, it did, it's as far as I know, that she didn't even, not even take a look at it. But like you said, even if she did take, had taken a look at it, being that this was a citizen-driven initiative and that they gathered signatures, the council regardless had to put it on the ballot. We were statutorily obligated by the state of Michigan to do so. So I want to make, and I clarified that at the last council meeting. I was kind of confused because it did include EMTs and we don't have EMTs that work for the city of Saginaw, but maybe some cities do. I know it did, according to the MLive article, Grand Rapids was another city that did not make it onto their ballot. I do know that, I can say that there is some litigation that's in the courts. There are no decisions that have been made to this date. So with that said, if it does pass and it is part of our charter and the courts do decide that it's improper or unlawful, as we have done in the past, we'll just amend our charter and we will just make notes on that. But like my councilman has said, I, at this point, cannot say or cannot take a stance on it. It's, it's a ballot initiative, but I can state those facts.
Thank you very much, appreciate that.
I will say this though, I do stand, and you can see my votes, I do back my police officers and I do back my firefighters and that my votes do reflect that.
Candidate number six.
That's me. With the Black the Blue proposal, as far as what I know of it, you know, it's just from somebody, like everyone says, from the outside, from outsiders, that's not from our city. But what's important, I have a lot of, lot of people that asked me about that, I would say a few people, that asked me about that proposal. And I would like to say that, like I say, my, my stance is we stronger together. And we need to make sure that in our community that we educate, you know, each other on what's going on in our community and be aware of what's going on too as well. And there's some good information about that. I got it from Carly's website as well. Did some good research over there. So, I mean, it's important that we know those things and, and, you know, people take the lead on educating the community, especially some of our community leaders who are seated in the, in the community as well, to educate those communities on those different things because people do have questions. And I know the city councils say, I, you know, they can't, they can't have a, share their opinions about it from yes or no. But, you know, I, I'm pretty sure I'm, I'm knocking that one down with a no. And so, because, you know, our community doesn't, didn't know anything about it. So that's one of the reasons why, and, and some of the verbiage that was on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Braddock. Candidate number seven.
I look at it from a perspective, and again, my name is Jacinta, JJ Seals. I look at it from a perspective as, right now in the city of Saginaw, I look at how many police officers we actually have working in the city. I look at their budget and what they're working with. I look at how they have to scrape for money, how they have to write grants. I went to the last city council meeting and I listened to the chief say how they are training a grant writer right now to teach this young grant writer how to get more funds for the police officers. And I'm listening on how they are robbing Peter to pay Paul for their own department because of how much money our city is bringing in, not being able to cover their department. But they're still making it happen. So I, I do support the police officers and, and support this initiative, Back the Blue ballot. And so my stance is yes for them because in times of crisis, everyone wants to have an insurance policy. Everyone wants to be supported, everyone wants to have, make sure their families are okay. And I would want to feel the same way if that was me. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Seals. Candidate number eight.
That would be me, George Copeland. What I can't say, my colleagues have already said about what we can talk about. The one thing I will say is go check my voting record on this, please. Just because I would ask our resident to look and read this proposal. Look at who it covers. Look at our budget and see who we are responsible for. So as citizens, I cannot sway by my opinion on this. But my ask as a council member, current council member, is that you, one, check my record on the vote. And two, that you will look at our city budget and you look at the proposal and you determine as a citizen if this is something that you should vote for. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Mike Thompson, number nine. That proposal is really cleverly written. The first one says body cameras and all that, that's to get us to vote for it. But the rest of it is all lining their pockets. The second one should have been maybe to support a complaint process when people are abused. Or the third one could have been maybe restore residency that Angler took away in 1990s and so they don't have to live in the city anymore. So definitely vote no on that. But when I was watching the council meeting and they had to put it on the ballot as they've explained, they weren't explaining it that well at that council meeting. And I'm watching and it says city charter amendment. I thought they were going to put the tax caps on the ballot until they got two hours later till the end. And then they still didn't do it. They still didn't explain it. They could do a lot better job communicating with the public during the meetings. Imagine it's a student government day every meeting and the citizens can pay better attention to what you're talking about. So please be more transparent. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
No, no.
I'm sorry, Mr. Ostache, I can't let that, we'll, we'll devolve into something else. But I, we, we can note your frustration, for sure. Number ten.
I am number ten, Heidi Wiggins. The language, the language on, on that sounds wonderful. I, I love the police, I want to support and give back to the police because they give so much to us and all of our first responders. The language sounds great. I just don't trust the source and I don't trust amending our charter for it. It just, I don't understand why that's even a thing for, in this case. And it's too vague and more research needs to be done. And if you're asking me yes or no, how I would vote on this, it would definitely be no at this time. Just because I don't, I don't trust how it would play out. I don't trust anything really about it or the source of the, the, the people that brought it here. So I would vote no on that.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Candidate number ten.
Oh, I was ten.
Sorry, number eleven.
Charles Sledge. I voted no. I voted no because it was my prerogative to vote no. I stand here and I see we got police officers in the back. We all support our police officers. And when I looked at my tax bill, I paid the police already when I paid my taxes. So we paying for the police department already. So I didn't have a problem circling and pencil and then no because that was just a dumb thing that we put on our road to vote on. That was just something that could bamboozle you. Don't be fooled, vote no. I'm telling you to vote no, nobody wants to tell you to vote no, vote no. Could have offered, ready, Officer Williams, if you truly, if I thought that he needed that, I would have circled yeah so fast to help him in the department, I would because your police officer said, yeah, he protects us. He do, they do, all the police do. But I voted no in good conscience and don't have not one eye could care less who thought about what I voted. I voted no. Because it was bad.
So how would you vote on that?
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And candidate number twelve.
That would be me. I'm just going to reiterate what my colleagues have said, simply because we should have had discussion on it at the city council meeting and we failed to do that. We should accept responsibility for, for not communicating. Because as I said early, earlier, when, when the council who you've elected to lead does not lead or does not communicate, it creates a vacuum where other people step in and fill it with their interpretation of what's going on. And I don't think that's And I don't think that's good for anybody. What I will say is that we were constitutionally bound by the Home Rule City Act, which is Michigan case law one hundred seventeen point twenty-two. If we decide we want something on the ballot, we send it to the governor. If the legislature decides they want something on the ballot, we send it to the governor. Hopefully, they get their response back to us in time so we know how to proceed. If she objects or they object to anything and it comes back to us, we have to reconsider it. And then with a three-quarters majority, then we can still proceed to put it on the ballot. The one exception to that, and is as it should be, is if it's a citizen-led petition drive. The only questions I have to ask myself as a councilperson when deliberating on that is, did they qualify by law to get it on the ballot? And am I legally bound to put it on the ballot? And if the two answers to that question are yes, the research I do at home by myself, that is for me as an individual. You have to be responsible for yourself. Um, you have to do the research. And I hope everybody in the city of Saginaw does a deep dive on every single one of us, just the way Ms., the same way Ms. Hammond did on this ballot initiative, 'cause you should research all of it that same way.
Thank you, Ms. Bencher. Uh, I'm gonna move to the next question after stating the following, um, which is much in line with what many of you said. The question was able to be answered by candidates depending on their particular status route now in different ways. And what, what I think it definitely shows is the net necessity of researching each candidate's record, as was suggested, whether they're in, uh, on council or not right now. Obviously, this is probably preaching to the choir, as it were, given the level of civic engagement in this room, but also telling our community citizens the, the same, that engaging in this process does require some research on their part, whether it's on this particular ballot initiative or another, to include those kinds of thoughts about, um, what we were with the ARPA funding as well. Whether it was process or theme that we were talking about, it is two distinct areas. So I just wanted to throw that out there, um, for, for the public as we go to the next question, which will be of the purple kind. Yes. It's a lot, it's a lot of numbers and colors. Ideal in words. So, um, this is about the city, the city council school liaison committee, okay? Again, so I'm gonna ask purple number one to go first. But the Saginaw City Council School Liaison Committee consists of city, county, and school district representatives who work together on matters of mutual interest for the benefit of Saginaw students and the Saginaw community. They are known for putting together the Hot Times Summer Youth Activities Guide. The question is, what are some other projects that this committee could work on? And I'll yield to purple number one.
I'm purple number one. Um, some other projects that this committee could work on is, um, also becoming an alliance partnership with the Saginaw Promise. Can you guys hear me?
Move your microphone. It's okay. Just do it.
To become an alliance with the Saginaw Promise, um, that's also a, a county-wide initiative. The Saginaw City County School Liaison Committee, um, I remember that as even twenty, thirty years ago, they, um, there were some initiatives that were going around. I remember something called JTPA and they had some summer program. And it was, it was a summer program for students that was, um, citywide. And I remember those type of programs that we had, um, for our youth. And so with Saginaw Promise, it just opens a door of more collaboration with city entities and with organizations through educational services. Even in this, uh, the county, the, the county, um, uh, I'm sorry. I'm losing my thought. I'm thinking about the Chamber of Commerce in the county and bringing in other entities to come in and help us with the liaison.
Thank you, Ms. Seals. Appreciate it. Candidate number two?
Yeah, thank you. Um, I know that sometimes in the high schools, the students need community credits for graduation. And you hear a lot of times, uh, people are just talking about the city doesn't look good or there's a lot of trash. And so I'm just thinking community cleanup programs in the summer, uh, where kids get together and go clean up a park or clean up streets, which can just create a lot of pride and feel some ownership. And really, that's basically my, my answer.
Thank you, Mr. Ostache. Number, candidate number three?
That's me, number three. Um, with this, with the city school liaison committee, um, I would say other projects I would like to see far as, um, the committee be assistance to the, um, school district, far as helping our kids what's needed after school. You know, a lot of these kids, we look at our children and we want our children to strive, but they got a lot of barriers in their home. You know, a lot of different factors. They got, uh, criminal parents, they got drug-addicted parents. Some people don't even have any parents, right? And so we, I, I feel like the, the liaison should look at something, extending something, school services and putting money into our summer programs and putting money into our after-school programs and giving those kids some things they can do, having something they can look forward to when they get out of school. A lot of our kids don't have anything to look forward to when they get out of school. And so you have a lot of kids just walking around here, getting into whatever they wanna get into. And then, and this, and then we have to understand, we got fourteen-years-old, fifteen-years-olds shooting each other. They got guns, access to guns and vehicles and... So they got access to the wrong things and we need to start building some access to the right things. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Braddock. Candidate number four?
Michael Thompson. I kinda feel like this is my question because I've been going to their meetings since my last years at the Saginaw News, almost twenty years ago, and I'd be the only one there. These are representatives, not the whole council, not the whole school board, not the whole county board, but representatives on this committee, combined representing about a half-billion dollars. And they only meet every three months 'cause they can't even think of anything to do. To me, other than that book you mentioned. So I went to their meeting last week by coincidence and I gave them a list of things they could work on, starting with metropolitan government, like uniting the police and fire operations, down to the summer youth employment program. And their response was their last vote of twenty twenty-four was a vote to not meet again until January twenty twenty-five. So no matter what you want them to do, you should at least ask them to do something, please.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Candidate number five?
Yes, Tobias Young. I think some other projects, I, I know that, um, I've had the opportunity to, uh, speak with, uh, high school students periodically. I've, uh, been asked to come in and I think, uh, in the educational system, I think, uh, they maybe have some things where they can, uh, speak to, I guess, uh, people that are in certain careers and have them come in and give them some different options and things like that, you know? Because I know in the educational system, they don't always, you know, roll out as like, uh, just, um, getting a degree, but there's no like stopgaps and they're like talking to them about trades and things like that. So I think, uh, maybe a liaison between, uh, taking, taking them into some businesses and letting them see some different careers and professional people. I think that'll be, you know, a, a good project and, and give them some different options, you know? 'Cause college is not always for every child, but just let them know they still can be successful and they can look into the trades and, and, uh, different careers, you know? Actually have job fairs where they go in and, and, and talk to, to workers and things like that. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate number five? Are you candidate five, Mr. Young?
I'm six.
We'll go with you then.
All right. I'm Heidi Wiggins and, um, I liked a lot of the ideas, the job fair, you know? I just have a, a eighteen-year-old at, at home, just graduated from college. You know, she's, she's looking for ways to get involved in the community. I think if they're exposed to ways to, uh, to give back, um, volunteering at nursing homes or just exposing them to, to, to something that is outside of their comfort zones and outside of, uh, their own selfishness. I think that would help, help them, um, just give them a, a bigger idea of what else is out there, you know? Like, like he said, Tobias said, um, not everybody's built for college, you know? I graduated from Delta, happy about that. But, you know, my daughter, she's interested in, you know, being more so in, in baking or something like that. So if, if they're exposed to other possibilities, that's not just, okay, I graduated, now I'm going to work at Kroger, you know? And that, there's anything wrong with that. Um, but if they're exposed to more, um, more possibilities, giving back to the community, I think just those things, uh, reading to kids, something that gives them something, um, that's outside of their comfort zone makes them grow a little bit more.
Thank you, Ms. Wiggins. Candidate number seven?
Charles Sledge. As a behavior in the business, art there at the academy, every morning I see the need for some of our babies to get the after-school help that they need. We have so many children in our fourth and fifth grade that cannot read, can't add, can't multiply, can't subtract, and can't divide. And it's sad. And we also have some parents that can't read, can't add, can't multiply, can't subtract, and can't divide. They tell us. They can't help their babies with their homework because they don't know how to do homework. So if this school liaison committee could come together and provide some type of after-school activity for parents and the child to possibly learn together, maybe that'll help the child. The parent and the child learning together, that'll help the child. Once again, schools are stretched thin. You keep hearing from downtown, "No money, no money," but somebody may give some money. And if not being spent on our babies like it should be, our children are our future. But how can they be our future if they can't add? Count how many pills supposed to go in your pill bottle? Or how much change they supposed to get back, parents for the child. So that's what I would ask the school liaison committee to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate number eight?
I am number eight, Charles Allen again. And first of all, be honest, this question kinda confused me at first. Um, I did, had got a chance to do some quick research and I think, you know, because I work with youth and youth programming is on my platform, you know, I think a focus on civic engagement, I think encouraging kids to get involved in the political process because they are our future and they are our future that we will be passing the torch to. They need to understand how city government works, how state government works and how federal government works. And what I've been able to do is be able to take kids to Lansing, to Capitol Day and be able to allow them to participate in their own process in learning how to do a legislative meeting, also be able to take them to DC, DC so they'll be able to lobby as well. I think that would be a great focus for this committee to, to add a pillar. I think if they're doing something like this already, great, but I think adding a new pillar to get our kids involved in this process is great.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Candidate number nine?
That would be me. So I've been on the city school liaison committee, um, city county school liaison committee since two thousand and eleven. Um, I think at that time I was the only one with school-aged children in the district and I think that's why it was kinda default put there. In that time, it, actually when we started, it was the city-county, well, city-school liaison, the county was not a part of it. And that was because of some row that had happened between the group of them prior to my arrival, um, over the money that each group would commit because each governing body had more money. We were all managing the decline in revenue. So one of the first things that got cut are smaller things like the thousand-dollar budget that came from each governing body. So that's why you saw a lot of those activities go away. Uh, one of the first things I did after I got on, on liaison committee was approach the county because I had good relationships with them and ask them to get back to the table. Uh, more recently, through the Seals Foundation, we've been, um, allocated, I think, a thousand-dollar grant per year and that's helped us gear ourselves back towards doing some more things. But in the interim, we were the governing body that came up with the pre-prom event after we had groups of young people traveling around town trying to do their prom day events and getting pictures taken and things like that. And now we have that safely on the island where we don't have any more homicides or shootings and everybody's safe to, to participate. Uh, one of the other things that we're working on in addition to bringing student governments into the, these meetings and getting them in with each governing body is a parks plan that I've been working on with the city manager from the city council standpoint and I'm hoping to flesh that out further with the county and the schools.
Thank you, Ms. Wiggins. Candidate number ten?
That's me, Carly Rose Hammond. Um, so I would be very excited if I were given the opportunity of elected to be on the city-county school board liaison committee because I think that it would be a great place to ensure transparency, accountability, and new programming for wraparound services for particularly county departments that operate within the city of Saginaw. I'm thinking of MDHHS. Um, if anybody has ever been there to apply for welfare like I have, um, you know that it is a building that, um, needs a lot of help. There are eight state police officers on the ground floor and you need an escort up by the state police to go see your caseworker. Um, it is, it is not a fun place to be. Also, I, I will say that I would like to see more accountability and programming, uh, worked on together by the city and, uh, the county especially concerning development grants, concerning big ideas for the county. That's where I think we can have that workplace happen, rather than have regional groups come up with their own ideas and then come to the county to see if they'll fund them. Have the county and the city and the school board working together on grant opportunities. And I'll say it once, I'll say it twice, I'll say it three times, however many times I wanna say it. I wanna see them hold the land bank accountable for not meeting for five years and missing on so many grant opportunities. I could count that in the tens of millions of dollars just in the city of Saginaw. So I would like to see more accountability on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hammond. Candidate number eleven?
Reggie Williams. And I'd like to piggyback off of Mr. Sledge. What I would like to see is more, uh, parent-child programming. And if that's something that that committee could focus on, that would be great. And I say that because, uh, coming from a law enforcement background, it's been nearly thirty years and it's a repetitive cycle of where the police and the courts are the ones that come up with these programs in order to help our children and our parents. I would like to see the school get involved. Since the kids are already there, already dealing with the parents, let's get the schools involved because law enforcement should be the last place, the last place where you're going for assistance for things that are taking place in your home or in the classroom. So, thank you.
And candidate number eleven?
That was me.
Twelve. See, I, I was an English major. And I can't add or subtract or divide. So, tw- sorry about that. Candidate number twelve?
President Gavin, you're all right. I'm George Copeland, number twelve. Uh, the one thing that I would wanna make sure is that the, the definition of this city-county school board liaison is clearly communicated. Um, because what I would hate for is that we duplicate our efforts again. Uh, we see within these three entities that we oftentimes do the same things, which duplicate funding. It's the same organizations that's trying to get the same funding. So if we clearly communicate the expectation of that committee, then if possible, I would be interested to see us having the conversation about transportation. That is a, that's a big conversation that we can see, because originally this, this committee, it focused on policy, policy issues. How can we work together? That is a policy issue we can talk to when it talks about transportation in our region. We've already talked about parks and recreation, but also increase the representation on the committee. If one of your colleagues, if one person from one of the entities cannot attend, there still needs to be a representation. If there's only a certain amount of representation there, let's look at increasing that number. And then also, um, because we're talking city, county, and school board, one of the things that I thought about was a, um, I've been privileged to go through leadership Saginaw and work with the Great Lakes Bay Youth Leadership Institute at Saginaw Valley and the Chamber of Commerce, but why can't we have that within our school board, in our school district? That's a program during the school year that facilitates that conversation. We do it separately, but how about bringing everything together and we can all do it through this community liaison committee team? Thank you.
Thank you. I apologize. Is it Dr. Copeland?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
But speaking, I receive it, yeah.
It's getting close enough. So this next question is the last question. It's the blue one before you all have two minutes to give, uh, some closing remarks. And it does illustrate this question in terms of theme is about, um, safety, which many of you have talked about, but it piggybacks off some of the comments you were making showing in how, where we're working and living is all an ecosystem. You pull one thread, it leads to another. So, that being said, um, on October fourth, twenty twenty-four... So, that being said, um, on October fourth, twenty twenty-four, Rin Jeltema of WJRT reported police made an arrest in connection with a deadly shooting at the Birch Park Apartments complex in Saginaw. The Saginaw Police Department found forty-three-year-old John Harris dead with at least one gunshot wound outside an apartment at thirty-one oh three Birch Park Drive around three ten AM Wednesday. Investigators confirmed Friday morning that they had arrested a suspect. They could not identify the suspect because he hadn't been arraigned and they had not, did not release any information about a possible motive for the shooting. Harris is the eighteenth homicide victim in the city of Saginaw for twenty twenty-four. The question is, what are your plans to make the city of Saginaw a safe city? And we're going to go with blue number one.
As a chief of police in a neighboring township and as a retired city police officer, uh, I think it's very important for us to understand the dynamics of law enforcement as it is today with realistic expectations. When it comes down to making our city safe, it cannot be done by the police department alone. It cannot. It will not happen if you are depending solely on your police department to make that happen. The citizens have to step up, the citizens have to speak out, and you have to be involved. That is the only way this city becomes the safe place we want it to be, that we desire it to be. We do not have enough officers. Even if we did, even if we did have enough officers, crime's still going to happen. But it's up to us. I am a citizen. I, in city of Saginaw, I'm a citizen. I'm not a police officer, I am a citizen. And I work behind the scenes to make their jobs easier. Because they are burned out, they're working crazy overtime, and that is not by their desire. That's because we have low manpower. But without us, without the citizens, we cannot have a safe city. We can throw out numbers, FBI report, you know, this and that, which by the way, that's slighted. But we can throw all of that out. It makes no difference if we don't get involved. Do not rely solely on your law enforcement, rely on us.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Candidate number two.
I totally agree with Councilman, um, Williams. Um, safety is a challenge and that's the bottom line. It's a challenge. And I've been talking about it pretty much the entire day. It's something that we've just been dealing with here in Saginaw. Um, we don't have enough police officers, but that's something that, uh, we've managed. And we've been savvy about keeping the amount of police officers we have. They can't do it on their own, we can't do it on our own, our parents need help, our schools need help. And, um, it's going to take the village, which is called Saginaw, it's going to take all of us to do this. Um, one thing that I would love to see happen in Saginaw is, um, the fire department comes to schools and have demonstrations for different classrooms at schools. They bring out a truck and they bring classrooms out and the kids come and practice. What do you do during a fire when the smoke's, they stop, drop, and roll, right? Um, why can't the police have something like that for our kids? Um, where they come out and come to the schools and do, um, presentations for our students where they can bring out maybe, um, a mobile, um, vehicle and show students on what to do during emergency situations. Um, and so that's just an idea of what maybe our police officers can do, something we can do in the city for our students, um, at the school level. But again, like Reggie said, it starts at home.
Thank you, Ms. Seals. Candidate number three.
That's me, Carly. Um, so when we talk about safety in the city, we have two separate issues here. Uh, one is the fact that we have a lot of gun violence. We have children killing other children. It is an epidemic in this city. And that takes a lot of wraparound services. It takes a lot of attention, it takes a lot of time, it takes a lot of funding, it takes a lot of care. It, it, it is everything from gun buyback pro, programs and youth opportunities, making sure we have mental health services available for people going through traumatic times. That is just one phone call away. That we make sure we are investing in our communities at a local level so young people feel the opportunity around them and not like everything is disinvested from them, like they have no future. But the other part of that is, um, we simply do not have enough police officers in the city of Saginaw. City police officers, local police officers. Uh, I had a friend who called, uh, the police because they were in a car accident. Um, and, uh, after three hours of waiting, they had to leave. And they just communicated with the other people. There are night shifts where there are fewer than eight police officers on duty for the entire city. Um, so I was very disappointed to learn that in, um, so, so a lot of the police benefits and pay are negotiated in union contract meetings. Most recent, uh, negotiating meeting where they decided on their bargaining contract, the city administration left out retirement healthcare out of the city police bargaining contract. It's gone. And the police officers that I've talked to, they can't convince anybody within a hundred miles or, or even further, they, they said they wouldn't even recommend others that they knew to join the police department because the benefits are so bad. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hammond. Candidate number four.
Michael Thompson. When I think of police, I generally think of responses to burglaries, um, domestic violence cases, bad drugs, that kind of thing. But in general, I do not see more police as an answer to the violent acts that plague our community. There could be a cop on the corner, but the gun players don't care. And so intervention, including mental health services, is the best response to try to prevent these horrors. Now, recently, a one point six million dollar state interventions grant came to Saginaw, but the Mexican-American Council was excluded, which was wrong. In fact, Bobby De Leon was employed by the school district as a result of his work in this regard. When will we, white and black alike, learn to include Latinos on a consistent basis? My other suggestion is when the police conduct their neighborhood porch roll calls, someone should pass out handbills door to door in the neighborhood because the ones I've attended have had two people with hands and the other one, three people.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Candidate number five.
That is George Copeland. And I'm thankful for Mr. Thompson's conversation about, uh, the resources. Um, we, it's going to be stated multiple times tonight that we need more police officers, we know that. Uh, one of the things that, when we add more police officers or we're talking about additional funding, what we're still not addressing is the root cause. Some things that we see within our communities are results of deeper issues. And that's where when we have these conversations, yes, we can increase our police officers, but even with the one point six million and our partnership with a local community organization, a part of that conversation was, hey, to prevent gun violence, we are increasing our mentorship. We are going to be the ones that assist the first responders in supporting families when tragedy happens. We have to also have the conversation of wraparound services for our community. And we are the village, we take care of one another, but we still need those funding supports to handle the root cause. We can continue to add. And then at the same time, I really want to see our community police officers back in place, walking the streets. We know that takes funding, but not only that, but we have to make sure that we not only increase our police officers, but we also address the root cause of violence in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate number six.
And that would be me, excuse me, Charles Allen. This is, this is an issue that, that hits home for me. Um, I have children, I, I'm a father of two, two kids, uh, Charles and Jewel, who I love dearly. And I want them to be able to feel safe in this city. Um, when I think about gun violence, I think about mental health. I believe that they are directly correlated. Also, disinvestment correlates with that as well. Um, if we focus on our mental health in our city, gun violence would go down. If we focus on investment in the communities that have been disenfranchised and have been marginalized, crime would go down. Uh, the truth is, is that there's parts of this city that do not thrive. There's parts of this city that do not have the essentials that they need just to get day-to-day meals, day-to-day schooling, those things people need. Healthcare is a human right, these are the things that people need. So when you think about proximity, this actual crime that we're talking about, I know, I knew both of, uh, the people. And I feel like that school to prison pipeline is a real big issue. One's going to prison, one is dead. We don't get to change that. We don't get to reverse that. And that just means another person in our community has been thrown to the wayside. And there is parents who have been through it and they've lost their children. My first thing is to say, I am so sorry. And I hope that we can work together to build a brighter future for Saginaw. And united on this issue, we will thrive.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Candidate number seven.
That's me, Eric Bredock. Um, you said how can, what, what our plan, I'm, I'm running on public safety. I feel like, um, that has dampened our city, um, the gun violence, the violence over the years. And how, and how, my approach is to it is that we need to tap into, um, you have leaders in here, but you also have leaders in the streets. And they call them OGs. And I think we have to communicate with those, those leaders also because they can communicate with those people that's into that lifestyle. Um, those kids and those children ain't going to listen, they only going to listen so much to us. And so for those, for those OGs or whatever y'all want to call them, those guys that been around that deformed, that formed those, that formed these gangs, they need to be the ones that deformed it, deformed it, because they the ones that formed it. And a lot of those are still here. A lot of these people are still around. And they had the influence to talk to the community too. And they, they probably had, they had the past that those kids respect. They're not going to respect us up here, they respect those guys. And, and, and so when you have this gang, this gun violence and it's gun, it's a gun culture. These kids, I coach basketball, um, youth sports, and these kids have access to guns, they have access to drugs, and they can get around the city just as well as me and you. I don't even, I have one headlight and the police pull me over. I don't understand how you can drive around here and shoot up the city. And so, so what I'm saying is that, um, far as with our safety, we have to, we have to come together and we got to start snitching, start telling, start telling the information that is needed. You know what I'm saying? Because they're disrupting and destroying our communities with that violence. And those who, and we have invisible, we have some borders here, north side, east side borders, I see that.
Thank you, Mr. Reddick.
North side, east side borders, so we got to get rid of those borders. And we have to talk to the community to do it.
Thank you, Mr. Reddick. Candidate number eight.
Yes, Tobias Young. Um, about ten years ago, uh, the city required three operational cameras on businesses. So one of mine was that, so I put my three cameras up and I thought that was a good idea. So if you have an operational business, three cameras deters crime, it can catch anything that happens in the area. So now, we move it fast forward. Now, are those the apartment complex that you spoke of? That's a business. Are they required to have cameras in that complex? And when a complex gets so big, they could maybe have a full-time security person. Those are things that could be passed for safety because it can't just keep occurring and nothing happens. Now, uh, the fire department, I'm not sure where they get their funding, but occasionally they'll have a whole bunch of fire detectors they'll give out to the residents to prevent fires. Well, technology is cheap now. So, uh, one of my residents at, uh, one of my rentals, you know, he said, hey, I want to get one of those cameras you got, you know, down at, at your hall. So now you got a light bulb camera, you can take your porch light out, screw a camera in, you got a camera and a motion light on the front of your house. So I'm thinking maybe initiative to where instead of giving out fire detectors, you know, give out a few thousand cameras to the residents. So now they're protecting themselves, but now they're part of the community. You know, you can get more, uh, officer engagement. You have a shooting or something in the area, well, hey, I got four cameras on the street. Let me talk to the residents. I think it's a good idea.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Candidate number nine.
Charles Sledge. We have a community resource officer, um, Artie at the Academy, Officer Beatty. I just sit here and thought, we haven't seen him this year, but we called him and he said that he's, like Officer Williams said, he's stressed in, he can't come by the school. He just can't find a time to come by. And, uh, we really would like for him to come and talk to our students because we have issues going on within the school of stuff that started at home that should be fixed at home. And then we wouldn't have all this violence out in the street. Stuff starts at your house, on your street, in your home, as parents of these children. And I can sit here and honestly say our children are running amok. I had to send two kids home today for saying they was going to kill each other. Second graders. We have a zero tolerance in our school, you can't make a gun sign. One did. He said, you suspended me. No, young man, you suspended yourself because you made the gun sign. Well, of course, the mom, they always come cussing, fussing, cussing you out. Well, where did he learn this? She said at home because he played with his toy guns. They're against the problem. He's at home playing with his guns, playing on the video with the gun. And then they pick up the real gun and they go out in the street and kill. It needs to stop.
Thank you, Mr. Sledge. Candidate number ten.
Heidi Wiggins. We need, I'm going to reiterate a lot of things that were already said, but it boils down to everybody needs to care and everybody needs to, um, make this a priority. And it does start in the home. Um, unfortunately, I know too many people that are in the middle of things that they should not be. I know a one person that, um, felt unsafe and his, this teenager felt unsafe and his father gave him a gun. And this guy told me about it and I was like, there's something wrong. There's something foundationally, fundamentally, spiritually wrong. And until that's fixed, you know, things like this is going to happen. Um, people are going to come up with their own answers when they're disenfranchised, when they feel forgotten, when they feel like they don't matter. They're, they don't, why would they matter, care about somebody else's life? So we need to, um, somehow come up with ways to breathe life and hope back into these kids' lives. Um, surround them with people that support them. It will be holistic, it will, it takes all of us. Um, but unless it's foundationally addressed and fundamentally changed, it'll keep happening, but we can change it.
Thank you, Ms. Wiggins. Candidate eleven.
That would be me. Thank you. Um, okay, a couple of things, I, I, I don't want to reiterate everything everybody said. I, I do really agree with Ms. Wiggins and of course my colleagues, they, um, I, I would concur with everything that they're saying. Um, but starting with, with, we need, we need sustainable funding. We need sustainable funding. Our millage, the majority of our police officers, you know, are, are, um, a balance between the general fund and the millage. And so when the property rates fluctuate, the amount of money we get fluctuates. So what we might be able to provide one year is not necessarily the same as what we can provide the following year. Uh, what we need is sustainable, um, resources. And one of the things that if the city got together collectively on every level and put their foot down, in addition to speaking out, making sure that people feel safe to do so, we can lobby and try to get some relief for our unfunded liability. Because I think that people know that we want more city police officers. We have the Michigan State Police here, they handle every other homicide and all non-violent shootings. Uh, we cannot do more with less than what we have. Um, but our unfunded liabilities, probably fifty percent of each police and fire budget go towards unfunded liabilities, that means paying off the retirees. So that means even with the relief that we've recently seen, we still have that liability there that takes up so many resources away from actually hiring our officers or being able to open up a pension plan again. I would also reiterate that what Ms. Hammond said was not factually accurate because contracts are negotiated on and agreed by both. The administration can't just yank anything away. And that case was settled in court, you can look it up or you can see me afterwards, I'll give you the case.
Thank you, Ms. Bench. Candidate number twelve.
Thanks, that's me, Councilman Hostisch. Um, right, I'm not going to reiterate everything that everybody said because I agree with them. A couple of the things to add on to what Mayor Pro Tem was just talking about, we can also add the income tax. And it's three, three different funding sources for police officers. And the income tax provides of the sixty million dollars, fifty-nine percent of that funds fifty-three, or forty-three, uh, forty-three police officers. So we need to pull back the budget, we need to look at the, uh, public safety renewal. If you voted for that back in February and approved it, thank you. Um, property values are going up in the city, they rose by five percent again. There is no cap on that. So that should increase by nearly a million dollars this year. And then we can also watch our income tax, more people that start working in this city, that's also going to be increasing. So let's look at that, I'm willing to work with the manager on that after the election. Councilman Williams, you and I have been talking about some things that's on your mind. Funding groups like HELP, we've been talking about the parents. HELP is an organization that's getting into these neighborhoods. I can't wait to get with Pastor, um, Kareem Bowen after the election. He's, he's been tapping on my door already, but I said if I'm not working at the credit union during the day, I'm knocking doors trying to get my seat. So, parents, you're right, we have to start working with the parents and the kids and what's going on in these homes. Um, it's heartbreaking when you actually see it happen. I was just also too at a recent forum and they actually spoke about this. They said, let's talk about the elephant in the room. We have kids killing kids, we're killing each other. We have kids killing kids, we're killing each other. And, and again, they talked about the parents. Thank you, Councilman.
Thank, thank you very much for all of you. We're gonna have two minutes for each of you to talk. I do wanna say a couple of things before we start. First of all, you'll notice that I didn't mess up the numbers on that question. I did come up with a new system. I have a new system, you see now. I do wanna also say thank you for, as you go into this last part where, where I will not probably make remarks at the end. But I did wanna say kudos to all of you and compliment each of you for your thoughtful responses as well as your decorum. It's not something we see on TV every day, so wanted to say thank you. And also to suggest that we, no matter the outcome of the election, we have some excellent engaged citizens here and wanted to thank you for your heart and your thoughts with regard to how to escalate and elevate Saginaw. I think we heard throughout this that this, the remarks that whether it's resources, education, home adding or subtracting, I'll take that away with me. And dreaming big are all parts of the next step for Saginaw. And so I wanted to say thank you for putting that out into the air for each of us. That being said, we're going to allow each of you two minutes for closing remarks in reverse alphabetical order. And so, Mr. Young, we'll start with you.
Thank you. Tobias Young, again, I'm a fixer by nature. You know, I get a call every day at work. It's broke, come and fix it. And that's what I do. I don't get over there, tell you what's wrong and say, hey, somebody need to fix that. So each of these options that I put on the table, I'm willing to do the work. And the reason why I'm running right now is because I reached a point in my life where I've accomplished or not, my life has slowed down, I have the time, and I'm seeking this seat because some of the things that need to be done, you might have to do it off the clock. You might have to put in the work. And if your life is so full, you won't be able to accomplish those things. So my life is open enough that I can give a hundred percent. So those solutions I had about the police department with the cameras, I'm willing to put in extra work for that. When I'm talking about the surplus of properties in the community, if they say, well, hey, we don't have a list, well, I'll ride around and take a picture at everything. I got the time to do that because I'm passionate about my options I put on the table. I'm not saying what somebody else needs to be done, I'm saying what I'm gonna do if I give, if I'm given the chance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Mr. Williams?
Thank you, Reggie Williams. Again, running as a write-in candidate for the two-year partial term, I am the only write-in candidate. So please turn your ballots over and write in Reggie Williams, and don't forget to fill in the bubble. With that, I would like to say to everyone, please do your research on your candidates. Character and integrity is important, not just in this race, but in all of the races. We need to make sure that we're putting people in positions that are there, truly there for us. They are not using their opportunities for something else. Make sure they're vested in Saginaw, in Saginaw. Make sure they're doing the work, been doing the work. That's, those are the types of people that we need in this seat. And also people that are willing to do the behind-the-scenes, the behind-the-scenes work. Make sure that we're researching, make sure that we're talking to, not just talking to, but being involved with the community. And don't forget to turn your ballots over and write in. And fill in the bubble.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Ms. Wiggins?
How do we do that again? All right, Heidi Wiggins. Again, thank you guys for being here and caring enough about the city of Saginaw to listen. Because I do recommend research, research, research on every topic and every candidate, like Reggie said, no matter what. Basically, I'm here to listen and represent the citizens of Saginaw. I believe, as I was walking, you know, knocking doors, I just felt a lot of disenfranchisement, a lot of people that had given up hope. And when you don't have hope, everything else goes south. So I want to be a part of the solution, making Saginaw better, moving it forward. I believe transparency is important. When big subjects come here for the council, I wanna hear from you, what you think about it. And I wanna represent that voice. I'm not here for me. I wanna represent what you, what you want. I want the streets to be safer for you, for my, my family, for everybody here. And I also want to see the growth of Saginaw financially, economically. I wanna do everything that we can for everyone, not just certain sects of, of the community or of businesses, but for everyone to be able to prosper and grow and have a chance. So that's why I'm running.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson?
Thank you again to everyone involved. Please view we candidates not as rivals, but as cooperating team members. Our competition actually is too much public indifference. Either general apathy or people feeling powerless, but why bother? And our mission all combined is to eradicate that. I left out a few things. With our income tax, five million dollars, the first thing to do would be to eliminate the trash fees of two hundred forty dollars a house. Those are regressive. They favor wealth. We are here to support the hard-up people first. The liaison committee had a plan to save Saginaw High by putting community services in the building that the middle school isn't using, and it fell apart, like I said, because they only meet every three months and only meet for a half hour when they do. So that plan should be revived because the Saginaw High building, few people know, is in danger. My own background started, I'm the old one here, started fifty years ago. When I was a sports writer at newspaper, I had times during the day, so I volunteered. And I was assigned to try to create a neighborhood group on the northeast side. Very simple training, ask, knock on the door. What do you think would help your neighborhood be better? Do you think you would be interested in being in a group to work toward that? And if we could get some kind of program started either through the community foundation or whatever, that would be something that I think would be great to get people back involved in the city. Thank you for everything tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Mr. Sledge?
Charles Anthony Sledge. I wanna thank you guys for having this forum tonight and also acknowledge my two daughters that's in the room, Courtney and Jasmine Sledge, taxpaying citizens, income taxpaying citizens, citizens of Saginaw. Courtney is also the mother of my first grandson, Emmanuel. Emmanuel is one of the people that I'm representing tonight at this table. I'm doing this for him as well as you. People in the city of Saginaw, I believe, need affordable housing, feel they can be safe in a grocery store within their community. I can't say it enough. Fairness and equality over all sectors of the city of Saginaw. If you feel, if you feel that everything's been going great, vote for the people, put them back in their seat. If you feel you won't change, make the pledge and vote for Charles Anthony Sledge.
Thank you, Mr. Sledge. Ms. Seals?
Saginaw, thank you for coming out today. My name is Jacinta J.J. Seals. I believe it's time to move forward a positive future. One thing I didn't get a chance to say because my brain was convolved at the time, that the city, county, school liaison committee could work with the Saginaw Promise and the city, county, the county chamber of commerce, bringing together those three entities to create a program like JTPA. And that was a program twenty, thirty years ago that was a productive program for students that were in the Saginaw Public Schools and the surrounding areas. That would be a great, a great entity for that, them to look at and to, to go check out that program that they did twenty, twenty-something years ago. Also, I am also looking at working very hard as a councilperson for the city of Saginaw. A lot of people say, you taking after your mother. No, I'm doing this for my city. I lived in Houston for four years and I had to come back home because I knew that I could have done this in Houston, but I said, no, I wanna come home to do this. I wanna do this for my own people. I wanna do this for my own students. I might wanna do this for the city of Saginaw. So allow me the chance to grow in this position, to become who I need to become for the city of Saginaw. And so I asked for your support, I asked for your help in voting me in, and I thank you for this opportunity today. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Seals. Mr. Ostache?
Yeah, thank you, Councilman Ostache. So I wrote some notes down, I'm gonna read. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for putting on this event. And Saginaw on November fifth, please give me a chance to work for you for another four years. As stated by myself, public safety is my number one concern. From what I, what I, what I do here in the city, it will take state legislators, prosecutors, judges, police, businesses, neighborhoods, and you, every resident in and city. Crime is like a virus, it knows no neighborhood. It affects everybody. I said, we can build, renovate, increase population all we want, but it's gonna take everything I just mentioned to address the public safety issues. I'm ready to work and I'll work with anyone. I will always be accessible to those who know me. I'm just a text or a phone call away. I will always provide support and show up for your events. I promise to continue to go to your neighborhood meetings to listen, help, and discuss city business, creating all kinds of transparency. I will, I will visit our community centers to have conversations and work with our youth. With a steady hand, I will continue to lead the new development coming to our city. Our past mayor, Greg Branch, my mentor, who always led us, who also led us through the mortgage crisis, has taught me well. Saginaw, we have not seen this much coming to our city in years. There's a new skyline coming along the Washington corridor and it's gonna be done by 2030. The new riverfront entertainment park is also coming. And Old Town is seeing a lot of development and boom. I'm excited for what breaks ground next year. We also have, in, in addition to all of this, Corning's new one billion dollar solar plant has been, and council has been working with them to fill their job positions. I'm committed to making this happen. They need to hire the residents, they're, they need to hire and they're looking for city residents for their success. These jobs are bringing, bringing out a twenty-one to twenty-five dollars an hour benefits. They're gonna hire then train. There's eleven hundred jobs coming to the plant, they just need a GED or a high school diploma. There's also two hundred plus office jobs. We've already gotten taken care of, these stars, transportation. And I've also been pushing for childcare in these discussions, and they have shown me that this is something that they have been doing in their New York locations.
Thank you, Councilman. Ms. Hammond?
Thank you. This was an amazing forum. We are twenty-five minutes over time, so everybody who is in the room right here, good job. But I, I, I don't wanna underplay that. I know parents have murdered children. I know we're in the room today. They've been outside City Hall multiple times. They've been speaking at City Hall meetings multiple times. I thank you for your relentless advocacy and your activism. I have my mentor here, LaShay Adarasaw. She's gonna be like, oh my gosh. But I see her there with the glasses in the third row. She taught me everything I know about organizing, so talk to her. But I've, I've, I've been in that position many times. It's like you're throwing your body at a wall and breaking your own body to try to make change, try to break that wall, trying to get others to do the same thing with you when there are people on the other side adding bricks to that wall. It's tough. It sucks. But I applaud your efforts and I, I consider myself to be an advocate. I've been described many times as a protest leader and I'm not gonna run away from that, that's true. I've led a lot of protests. Whether or not I had a seat, whether or not I felt I had a voice, I tried to show up when and where it mattered. And that's what I wanna continue to do. That's why I'm running for this seat. I'm running for Saginaw City Council, two-year partial term seat on the back of the ballot. Vote local, I know all of you will, everybody in this room. But on November sixth, I'll be there, too. On November sixth, when you show up with signs, I wanna stick with you and sit with you after the meeting and make sure that we are doing everything we can, going down every avenue. Because even if the law's not there, even if it's not written yet, I'll go to Lansing and try to get it written. I'll go to DC and try to get it written. That's what I'm used to doing. That's what Saginaw needs. Thank you for your relentless advocacy. I, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hammond. Mr. Copeland?
Thank you. First, I would like to start off thanking the League of Women Voters of Saginaw County. And I thank them also for their fact check. I want to make sure that I put that on the record. Earlier, I made a statement regarding the city manager. We weren't, we did not, we were almost there, not quite. All right, so thank you for the fact check of the League of Women Voters of Saginaw County for that. But also, I really wanna just spend this time of just saying thank you to Saginaw. When I decided to run in 2020, this was new to me. I just really was a young parent who wanted to make sure to advocate for his community and not really just for my community, for my son. And now I have two sons and a daughter, and they are the current future. And I wanna thank you for the opportunity to learn, to support, for your support, for your correction in my first four years. We've made some strides together over the past few years, but the truth is, there's still work to be done. There's still work that must be done. And I hear your concerns. I must make sure I hear the concerns. I understand that everything that we did didn't sit well, but I want you to know that George Copeland, the goal of his votes was to strengthen our community. But moving forward, I'm even more committed to greater transparency and working closer with our community. But the truth is, we have to push harder. Things that we wanna see in our community, we've talked about budget, we talked about all these concerns, but it's a pushing harder, working toward a greater tomorrow. And when it comes down to bringing opportunities, I can say that I've been working to expand our reach beyond Saginaw's borders. Sometimes I think we stay local. Saginaw is that place to be. The resources, the resiliency of our community, there is no reason why we don't have larger organizations here within and larger business. We thrive on our small business and we're thankful, but we have to make sure that we continue to support our small business and make sure that we have more jobs, more, better infrastructure, and most of all, stronger neighborhoods. Stronger neighborhoods here in the city of Saginaw. So I ask again, let's continue this journey together. And on Saginaw, on election day, vote George Copeland because the work isn't finished yet.
Thank you, Councilman. Mr. Braddock?
I'll just, first of all, I'd just like to thank the League of Women Voters of Saginaw County for putting this, this thing together, allowing us to speak. I'd like to thank the president here, Ms. Weber here, and thank you, Dr. Galvin, for being the mediator. I'm running because I wanna see Saginaw strive. I wanna see our, our city stand out. I've been ambassador for our city my whole time and as, you know, serving in the military and, 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 and so I just wanna see our, our city strive. I wanna be, and when I'm elected, I wanna ensure that we have a transparency government, have a government that you can trust, and that we work, work together. You know, I'm not working to be divisive or to, to, or have any personal agenda. This is for our city of Saginaw and for our people and for our babies that's out there. Because we have to plant that seed, we have to plant that seed to grow that shade for our children for the future. And that, and, and some of the things, the things that we're talking about, we might not see the immediate effects of it, but we need to start working on and building for the next generation. And so I'm running for the next generation, for our children, for our babies, you know, and, and also too, our city, we, we need, we need our city to come together in all, in all organizations. And we, and, and that's why I'm running, because I wanna be, help bring some connections together and communicate with the public and, and, and reach those and, and get more people involved. And there's a lot of people that wanna get involved that don't know how either. And so, and just because they don't dress like you and act like you and be like you, that don't mean that they cannot help. So we have a lot of people that's very talented in our, in our community that we can use, that can help, you know, move things forward. But I would just like to say, you know, you're voting for me, you're voting for a movement because I'm connected to this city. And when it comes to public safety, I want to, I wanna get rid of these, these invisible borders.
Thank you, Mr. Braddock.
Thank you.
Ms. Bench?
Thank you. Again, my name is Annie Bench. I am currently serving as your Mayor Pro Tem, and I hope that you flip your ballot over and bubble my name in right before you bubble in Reggie's name there, as he so explained. But the reason why I'm running is, is somewhat different than why, when I first ran, because my kids are, are older certainly now, but myself, my colleagues who are currently serving on council, and every other person I worked with on council over the last thirteen years have done the work to try to get Saginaw into a better place than it was or where it would have been without our leadership. And I think that any good group has a good balance of experienced leadership with integrity and leaders that are new with fresher energy, fresher eyes, fresh ideas. I love Mr. Young's idea about, I don't think we can do it instead, but I want to talk to you because I, we should talk. But I think that that's, that's the great balance that we have to strike. I think we have a council that is fairly representative of the, you know, of the community. But I think it's entirely, it's incredibly important that we have people who are from here, know the community, didn't just start doing the work because their name was going to appear on the ballot. Didn't just start watching the meetings because they were running and actually know what they're talking about. Because good people mean well, but they make promises they can't fulfill. They get there, they find out what the checks are on their, you know, and the restraints are on that power. And frankly, right now, a lot of these candidates speaking out about ballot initiatives have more power in their capacity as a candidate and a private citizen than I do as a city councilperson. And I think it's important to know those things and know those boundaries and know those differences. But I, I hope that everybody, either way it goes, vote your local elections. They are so important. You will, you know, your congressperson goes to DC, your councilperson stays here and deals with the choices they've made. Your other legislators, same with Lansing. We are the only ones who make decisions that we 24 hours a day, seven days a week, have to live in and with. So there are a lot of things that, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bench. And finally, Mr. Allen?
The advantages of going first have paid off. I want to acknowledge my mother who is in the room, the princess of the rocking gospel blues, Cherie Williams, a Saginaw native. And I also want to acknowledge the fact that this is the birthplace of Stevie Wonder. This is the birthplace where we understand that great things can grow out of concrete. I'm running for city council because my children deserve for me to put my hand in and make sure that they have a legacy to lead after. The place where they can build, a place that they can call home, a place that they can have their children, my grandchildren, and they're able to actually get ahead. Not just make it, but get ahead. I want to see this city thrive and I believe that united, we're able to thrive. So yes, flip over your ballot to the nonpartisan section and vote for Charles Allen. A new, bold leader, ready to work and most importantly, to serve you. I want to hear your voice because if I can't hear you, I can't vote for you. So together, we can do something new in the city of Saginaw. United, we thrive.
Thank you. This concludes our, our forum and wanted to say thank you to the candidates.
My name is Carly Anderson. I'm going to make this short and sweet because I know you guys are ready to go. I just want to say thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this event. Thank you to the candidates for using your voice to speak up for our present and our futures. And thank you to the community for showing up to show your dedication to our present and our futures.
Let's give a hand to our moderator. And I can't say enough about you that are here, the candidates. We tried to work very hard and make sure this was a meaningful forum for you. And I hope we have been successful in that. I also want to thank our audience and we are over, but we appreciate you saying and finishing out this forum with us. We had one candidate that was called away on an emergency, Ms. Silva. She was not able to be here this evening, but she was signed up to be one of the candidates. To our timekeepers over there. I kind of stood over there with them, if you saw me standing over there just to make sure we were keeping on time. We didn't want anybody to go over their time. We couldn't have any editorials or anything, but we wanted to keep everything. So let's give our timekeeper. So we just thank you all. Saginaw needs a lot. And we've got to really mean what we're saying and really put our efforts out there as a community, as a council, as citizens. So we thank you for taking this on and we thank you for being here with us tonight. If you have literature, you may pass it out following the end of this meeting. Thank you very much to all of you.